It's okay. All right, we're going to call the meeting to order. We could have everyone come sit down.
Come sit down.
All right, we're going to call the meeting to order. Councilmember Hare, could we get you for the invocation?
Dear Lord, thank you, thank you, thank you for a great, great day. Thank you for life and health and strength. We thank you, Father, that you are giving us King minds and thoughts as we move forward on our September 2nd work session for the citizens of Fayetteville. We thank you, Lord, and we ask you to take us through this meeting this afternoon, that we can be on point, that we can get things done, and that we can get things done in the right atmosphere. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you. So if everyone could stand for pledge allegiance?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before I go to the manager's report, we have Councilmember Benevente on Teams, if that is my understanding. Councilmember Benevente, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me all right?
We can hear you, thank you. So that leaves one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight of us here. Okay, so with that being said, city manager for your report, please.
No report this morning, ma'am.
All right, we will go into the approval of the agenda. Can I get a...
Sub move.
All right, I've got a first from Councilmember Thompson and a second from Councilmember Hare. All those in favor, raise your hand. Aye. Okay, so let's go to 6.01, received Blunt and Gillespie redevelopment efforts uptake. And that will be Mr. Colley.
All right, well, I'll be quick. So thank you, Council, Chris Colley, Economic Community Development. So here this afternoon to update you on where we're at, working on trying to find a productive and valuable use for our property at Blunt and Gillespie. Just a kind of an idea of what we're going to do here, I have a consultant team here tonight to work with us, HRNA. Their office out of Raleigh is supporting us, but they're all over the place. I'll tell you all about them here in a minute. Basically, we want to look at the goals of that feasibility study, provide an overview of the future decisions that would be coming back to council and looking for direction on, discuss the opportunities and challenges that the market presents, some of our stakeholder and community engagement, and then a couple of very preliminary development concepts that have been sketched out for the property. So starting off, we'll talk about project overview a little bit. So if you're not familiar with the Blunt and Gillespie property, this property is a little over nine acres, about nine and a quarter, at the intersection of Blunt and Gillespie, less than a mile from downtown. This property was originally acquired through our Hope Six efforts. We did that back in 2007, 2008. We revitalized a bunch of affordable housing in partnership with the Housing Authority and the private sector. And we also developed the concept for some economic development and growth as part of that project. The concept that we had for it didn't quite come to fruition. Lots of things came up. One is, you know, we were looking for a viable partner to help bring that economic development concept to life, but then also COVID happened and changed a lot of things economically and through the marketplace. If you, you know, are familiar with this intersection, this site also has the E. Smith House located on it. That park does a lot of really awesome programming, partnering with some local schools through the Cumberland County System and with Fayetteville State University, programming out that site with some really cool historical tours and things like that. So to get here, we did not just kind of start from scratch. We've got a bunch of things that were standing on the shoulders of giants and those that came before us, starting with the Downtown Renaissance Plan, which talked about this property. It set the basis for a lot of our downtown redevelopment that we work towards today. Our Conference of Land Use Plan, the county's Conference of Land Use Plan, which talks about the growth of the city and the county and what, you know, the elected bodies and city staff have recommended for the vision for that growth. And then the Economic and Business Development Strategic Action Plan, which we pretty much call the Red Rock Global Study. And so that one's very interesting because it did actually come up with four focus areas that it really leaned in on. And one of them is this piece of property in particular, so I'll save that one for last. The first focus area was Upper Murchison Road. It talked about the need for transportation improvements, the need for economic development to happen in that area. And so we just wanted to give a quick update on that, that as of right now, NC DOT is still wrapping up the right-of-way acquisition and ready to invest $52 million in road and multi-use paths on the upper part of Murchison Road. There's also some potential for industrial development. I talked to Robert over at SCDC, and he said he's working with the property owners and marketing that property as appropriate to bring in economic development and growth towards the 295 there. On the lower Murchison Road area, the original concept was for the baseball stadium to be down there. Council eventually moved that into the downtown core, but nevertheless, that is part of that economic kind of strategy for that area. And I would say that downtown fits that lower Murchison kind of, you know, tying the university into downtown strategy. The city alone has put half a million dollars into Fayetteville State University's hub. That's not counting the significant investment from Fayetteville State University and some other partners as well. That was actually something that was mentioned in that Red Rock Global Study as well, so that another great idea come to fruition through partnerships. Massey Hill was in there and had recommended a new high school. I don't have high school-aged kids, so, but I heard Massey Hill's classical high school is pretty good, and nothing really came out of that portion of this study. The Center City Action Park, we had a lot of things, right? The E. Smith House was acquired, renovated, and declared on the historic National Historic Register. We finally got all the property together in 2024. We had one property that was a little bit challenging due to a variety of air issues, and we were able to finally acquire that property just last year. And now we're looking at bringing HRNA in to help guide a public-private partnership so that we set it up correctly from the beginning, that the citizens and the council know exactly what this property is worth and what it can be leveraged for, and that we try to find the highest and best use for this property that we own. So with that, I'm going to pass it over to Austin from HRNA, and he'll bring us through the rest of the presentation. I can pause here very briefly, maybe for the history part of it, yeah.
What's the current zoning on that property? Is it all the same or is it different? I know it's different parcels, so...
Yeah, it's a mixture of zoning. So in your agenda packet, there's two additional PDF documents, one on current market scan and one on the existing site conditions. That existing site conditions talks about the current zoning, the future land use, the utilities and infrastructure that's available there right now, and all of that's in there. But it's a variety of zonings all around commercial use.
Okay, that's what I kind of wanted to know. Thank you.
All right, I'll let Austin take it from here. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, welcome, Austin.
Thank you, and good afternoon, members of the council. Glad to be here, excited to come visit Fayetteville and see you all today. I'll begin just by introducing HRNA. HRNA Advisors is an employee-owned company that focuses on supporting cities and working better for the residents who inhabit them. We have offices throughout the country, including in Raleigh, just up the road. I actually live in Greensboro, so, and been in North Carolina for about eight years now, so excited to continue doing work in my backyard. Our mission is to ensure that our clients and cities are able to take whatever problems they're looking for and put them into implementation, put them into action, and through that process create better communities, more equitable and resilient outcomes, and improve people's lives. We have over 180 employees. We do over 500 projects a year throughout the country and also internationally. And so we bring a national level of expertise to this project, but we combine it with local knowledge. That's why we have a team that is based in Raleigh here. Two of our team members work in Raleigh. We've both been in North Carolina for a very long time, and we work in North Carolina often, so we make sure to bring, to really partner that local expertise with also national As I mentioned, we've done a lot of different types of projects throughout the state of North Carolina. I think in particular, of particular relevance to this project is the Raleigh Union Station Project in downtown Raleigh, where that was a public-private partnership, where we helped Go Triangle identify a development partner to build a bus loop facility that had apartment buildings built over it. They just opened the bus facility about a month ago. It opened in early to mid-August, so there are now local buses actually using that facility. It's right next to their train station, and they have a developer onboard who is expected to deliver some retail and apartments on top. And while Raleigh is a different concept, the type of public-private partnership is what we are looking at, supporting you all in with the Blunt and Gillespie sites, where we're looking to find a way that you can all partner with a private sector developer to create a really great outcome for this site. We are joined on this effort by MKSK Studios. They are a planning, urban design, and landscape architecture firm. They focus on the connection between people and places. We have folks from their Atlanta office and their Greenville, South Carolina office supporting the team. They're really helping us think through the physical aspects of the site, whereas our expertise relies on understanding of the real estate market and how the, on the financial feasibility of the site, and how to take that understanding and put it into an implementable strategy that enables you all to achieve your goals for this city-owned property. So I want to do a quick overview of the process for developing the site and specify where we are in the process and where we will be heading in the coming weeks and months. So in blue, you have kind of a high-level development process for any project. So you begin, you acquire the site, you then identify development and design vision. From there, especially if you're going into a public-private partnership, you need to identify and solicit a development partner who can execute on that vision. You then will execute term sheets. As you begin negotiating with that developer, you create, you negotiate the development agreement, and then that leads to groundbreaking, where you're actually beginning construction onsite. Our process is focused all on the second step, where we are at the draft development and design vision, and as part of that, we are working to help you all understand the market potential for the site, to test physical scenarios for how the buildings can lay out on the property. From there, identify a market feasible development, where a developer would actually come to the table and be willing to partner on the project, and then from there, we can decide a pathway forward, leading into Phase Two, where you all would go through a process to develop, to identify the development partner that you want to move forward with. You can do that through a request for qualifications, a request for proposals, but that Phase Two will really focus on identifying that development partner once we have a clear pathway forward. A little bit more detail on the timeline and our specific scope of work. So we are focused on two phases of work. First, as I mentioned, that design vision process, but also supporting you all through developer solicitation. So we are currently, we have just wrapped up the second part of our first phase, getting through the existing conditions review, and we're in the middle of our third task, where we're looking at conceptual development. And so what that means is that for the existing conditions, we looked at both the land use and zoning conditions of the site, but also the utilities that are available onsite, the existing infrastructure. And we also looked at the real estate market to understand how different uses, such as multifamily, retail, office space, and hotel space are currently performing in downtown Fayetteville and in the city overall, to give us a sense of which of those uses might be viable for the site. We then have been working through our conceptual development process, where our partners MKSK have helped translate those initial market findings into some preliminary concepts for how the site could lay out and what uses could go on the site. And as part of that, we will be doing a financial analysis to understand the market potential and really to assess whether or not the property has the market viability to bring a development partner to the table immediately. Based on those findings, we'll craft a final development strategy, and I'll talk a little bit in a moment about how we will think about that and what kind of trade-offs and decision points we might make along the way. But that development strategy then immediately will lead into Phase Two, where we begin the process of identifying a partner for development solicitation. We, as part of this process, so we're coming to you now to give you an update on the project, we will also come to you at the end of Phase One to tell you our recommended strategy so that you all may provide input on how we move forward at that point. And again, I'll get into more detail about what the different decision points might be at that time. And then if you all decide to move forward toward development solicitation at that time, we would come back to you later in the phase, once we have identified our preferred development partners, so that you all could approve of going into negotiations with those development So as I mentioned, I wanted to speak a little bit to the future decisions that will be made as part of this. As we go through this process, and really as we're getting towards the end of our financial analysis and looking at a development strategy, we will go through this kind of high-level decision tree, and this is like an early theory of how we will make the decision. There may be other questions that come up along the way as we continue our study over the next couple of months. But when we identify, when we look at our financial analysis, we will first ask the question, if there is a feasible development strategy that can be implemented immediately? If that answer is yes, we will likely recommend you all going to development solicitation. If the answer is no, then we will start to look at, are there ways that we can phase the site and do a smaller development that gets the site rolling, and then maybe the rest of the site develops over time? If the answer to that is yes, again, we move forward to that development solicitation process. If the answer is no, then we start to ask questions such as, what resources does the city have to invest in infrastructure on the site to help move the project forward in the short term? Or are there other interim uses that the site can be used for to attract attention and start to activate it in the meantime? And so depending on the city's capacity, and the city could look, for example, to create infrastructure improvements, it could also do that interim activation, so using the site as an event space for people who want to have outdoor events, so that people are getting used to coming to the site, and it's creating that momentum and that cadence for people to want to go there, which then signals to the development community that it is a place where people want to be, and there's a reason for them to come to the table. If the city does not feel that it has the capacity to invest in that infrastructure and interim uses, we would then look to consider alternative strategies for deploying that site that could include selling the land, it could include waiting and holding for five years and seeing what happens, or other options. Again, this will continue to be developed throughout the process, but this gives you a sense of how we will think about the recommendations that we will bring to you all in a couple of months.
Question, Mayor Protem, if you may, before we go any further. I just have a question. I think what you just got finished saying is under the assumption that these sites aren't infrastructure-ready already. And if they aren't, isn't it our responsibility to make sure that they already are before we even start this private partner, partnership?
Yeah, thank you for that question. I think it really depends on the development potential of the site. So if we find that there is a lot of development potential here, it could be that a development partner would help support some of those infrastructure improvements to be at the site. And so part of our process is not just figuring out what infrastructure improvements are needed to make the site viable, but to what extent should the city expect a private development partner to want to invest in those infrastructure improvements?
Well, help me answer another question, because I think, I don't know who it was that sent us a slide about Salt Lake City, Utah, that we're going to visit in November. The way their city grew was because of a lot of private-public partnerships, and the reason they did that, because the site was already infrastructure-ready. So how did they do it compared to what we need to do, so we don't have to, so we could be implementation-ready from the start?
Yeah, I think that's a great question that we'll continue digging into throughout the rest of this process. So we'll, we'll get to understand, we'll, like, getting a little bit into the weeds of our analysis. We do this thing called a residual land value analysis.
Say that again.
It's called a residual land value analysis. The idea is after development, the question you're really solving is whether or not a developer would come to the table, and if the residual land value is positive, they would. If it's negative, they wouldn't. A lot of times, we come at these and we see that the residual land value is negative, and at that point, that's when we come to the city and say, hey, these infrastructure improvements are needed. So I think Salt Lake City is a great example of where Fayetteville could go, but we want to make sure, we're, we're trying to keep all options on the table at this time, so you all get to decide where you're comfortable investing in that infrastructure or maybe not investing in that infrastructure.
Got you. Very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Sure. So to that point, I wanted to touch briefly about the different types of delivery mechanisms for implementing development at the site through a public-private partnership. So through kind of traditional development models, the, the city might own and develop the site, and that is likely what you all did for this building, for example, where you identified a contractor to come in and build this property, as opposed to, say, a private developer owning the building and you all renting from that, that, that property owner. The benefits of this model is that the city maintains control of all the processes and decision-making. You're, they're able to, in this case, for the Blunt and Gillespie site, they could extend existing city systems really easily to that site. The cons, the downsides to that is that it does create a lot of legislative processes that you have to go through, and so it can be a slow process, and there's a lot of processes just to get through to make it happen. Within public-private partnership models, there are two primary buckets that we look at. There's ground lease partnerships and fee simple partnerships. I'm going to start with fee simple partnerships because it's the thing that most people are familiar with already. It's essentially where the city sells the land to a development partner and creates governance structures that restrict the uses onsite. And so you create an agreement that says, yes, we will sell you this piece of land, but you have to do X, Y, and Z things in order to maintain ownership of that land. The benefit of this is that it removes those legislative hurdles, and once the property has been transferred to that private owner, they can move at the speed of market and the speed of industry. The downside to that is the city does lose control of that real property, which it may wish to maintain as an asset long-term. It also is only a one-time infusion of revenue, and as opposed to being able to acquire long-term cash flow through a ground lease, through ground lease revenue. I will caveat that by saying, of course, you get the property tax benefit from that, so that is a way that you are getting ongoing revenue, but you're not getting it through that ground lease structure. The other P3 model that we often look at is the ground lease partnership, where the city maintains ownership of the property, but leases the, leases the property to be developed on by a private developer. The benefits of this is you maintain ongoing involvement in the ownership structure, you get cash flows from the ground lease itself, where that development partner is paying you a little bit every year that is, it's related to the value of the land that you would have gotten upfront, but it's sold out over time, and the city remains the development and entitlement rights over time. So if you have, let's say, a 99-year ground lease, and the development partner in 30 years says, I want out, the city gets a say, and what happens then, and gets to make sure that it continues to serve a public purpose. The potential downside is depending on the ground lease model itself, it could be less marketable developers. Now, we have a lot of experience making sure that ground lease partnerships are successful, but it is a potential risk that can come up in these P3 models. So as we move forward, we will continue to evaluate kind of the relative merits of these different approaches and identify an approach that balances the city's goals and the desired outcomes while managing these risks, but we wanted to introduce this concept early on because there'll be terms that we use later on down the road.
So we have a council member that has a question. Are you prepared? Okay, Councilmember Hare?
Thank you. I was trying to figure out which one of the models you were speaking of, either the one in blue or the one in the middle, where you stated that after a while, if the developer continues to meet some objectives that the city has, before that property goes to the developer, how, how long is that process? How long before it goes to the developer?
Between when you make the agreement and when the developer actually gets the property and can develop it, that is a conversation that we would have in consultation with the city attorney's office. The city may wish to have different periods of time. I'm not sure if you have like a standard time that you want to speak to on that, but I think it's something that we would want to speak to your council in.
My name's Imran, and I'm happy to come up with that.
Please, sir.
Good afternoon, my name's Imran. I'm also with HRNA and was taking notes. What you just described is a contract term, so what you could do in a ground lease scenario, which is the middle box, is you could stipulate in the ground lease agreement with the developer that by X date, we want to see something happen, infrastructure, the first building, temporary activation, and if that doesn't happen, based on your contract negotiation, you may have a term that says, by this date, if you don't have something going, we get the property back and we go back to market.
Okay, yeah, I'm, we're, I'm familiar with that. We've done that, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
I think we're good.
Great. So that was a lot of introduction for us to get to our analysis. So I want to speak briefly to the work that we have done so far to study the site. So to understand the development potential of the site that we're looking at, we looked at three different scales for our market scan to understand how development patterns were occurring, both near the site, within were occurring, both near the site, within about a half-mile-to-a-mile boundary of the site, within the downtown Fayetteville boundary, and then within the city overall. And the idea there is to understand what kind of advantages does the site have, because it's located downtown, as opposed to throughout anywhere else in the city, and what can we learn from different development patterns happening in those areas. So I'm going to take us through kind of the four major uses, because that was the focus of our market scan. And we first looked at the residential multifamily market, and saw that downtown Fayetteville has experienced slow population growth since 2010. It's grown by about 11%. That is in part due to the lack of new homes being built downtown, so it's one of those things, if you're not building homes, you can't see the population growth, but maybe you're not growing, maybe you're not adding new homes, because population isn't growing, it's kind of chicken and egg. But despite that slow population growth... Yes, sir.
Are you only meaning the slow, because I don't agree with that, are you only meaning the slow growth downtown?
Correct.
Not, okay.
Correct. That is only for downtown, not the city of Fayetteville overall. Despite the slow growth in downtown Fayetteville, there have been really healthy vacancy rates and consistent absorption. So vacancy downtown has been just over 4% compared to the city overall, which is at 8.5%. And rent has been higher in downtown Fayetteville than in the city overall. So what we see is that people are willing to pay more money to live downtown, and that is a good signal for people wanting to be downtown. It just demonstrates the potential for the Bunt and Gillespie site to spark a new move towards downtown and continue expanding that downtown boundary. While we looked at office growth as well, and while overall demand for new office space is fairly low in the near term, if there were spaces targeted towards professional services industries, that could attract some attention, especially as part of a mixed-use development program. There's been kind of slow job growth in the city since 2015, about 7% since 2015, which that then limits the near-term potential of new office space, unless you were to have a new employer just announce, like, we're bringing 1,000 jobs. That's a different scenario, but just adding office space and hope that a new employer will come, there's limited demand for that. But there could be a teneting strategy that focuses on, let's create space that's appealing to professional services workers, and that could spark some limited office demand. When it comes to hotel, what we have seen is that downtown Fayetteville has demonstrated an ability to drive new visitation by leveraging catalytic investments. So the Segra Stadium is a great example of this, where downtown became more attractive by the investment that happened there. And so if there is a desire to enhance the demand for hotel, then the city would also want to look at identifying strategic opportunities to enhance that demand by infusing more investment that attracts visitors. For the Bunt and Gillespie site specifically, there is a chance for it to expand on the city's arts and culture offerings. This is something we heard a lot through our public engagement, which I'll speak to in a moment, but really for this, it kind of takes like having a unique offering and making sure that we're adding reasons for people to come downtown. And lastly, we saw that downtown Fayetteville in particular is saturated with restaurants and clothing stores, and it could support some other unique retail offerings. And so one thing we heard a lot, and we saw in the data, is there's not a lot of what we call experiential retail, where maybe people are coming downtown to like do something, such as like go to an arcade, or go to a music venue, or a jazz club. Those types of like unique opportunities, we could add more of those to downtown Fayetteville, and that's something that this site could potentially attract, and help kind of drive more momentum in the downtown Fayetteville market. So we did have a community meeting a few months ago in June. During that meeting, we gained insight from over 45 participants who showed up in person. Some of that input we got was, there was strong support for mixed-use development that included an activated public space, a desire for more of those cultural entertainment options, some kind of like plazas, outdoor dining as well. As I mentioned a moment ago, a need for more kind of experiential downtown activities, such as art, music, and games. There was also a big push for family-friendly and youth-oriented amenities. There was conversations about the fact that there's not a lot of places for young people to go and be and hang out. And then lastly, there was also just broad support for new housing options near walkable amenities. In addition to the in-person meeting, we also hosted the same questions that we asked at that meeting in an online survey. We got 92 responses from that. I won't speak through all of these things, but a couple of things that really stuck out from it is that approximately 40% of respondents wanted some sort of natural play and lounge areas, so really having a desire for some of those outdoor amenities. People mentioned a desire for third places, places where people could relax, hang out, and connect without necessarily having to spend money to be there. In terms of housing, 60% of respondents favored relatively dense mixed-use buildings between three to four and four to six stories. I think from the public meeting that we had, there were people that were more interested in the three-to-four-story mix than the four-to-six-story mix, but we saw people looking for more kind of dense mixed-use buildings in general, which was seen as a way to activate downtown and help spread the footprint beyond Hay Street. Some of the other takeaways we got from that is that people want to feel safe, want downtown to feel safer, more central, and more walkable, and want to see local cultural representation through its food and retail options. And one thing we found that was important for this is that 37% of visitors were drawn downtown only by special events, but there's a desire for more everyday reasons to visit. And so that's something that this site could really help spark. So as I mentioned earlier...
If we could, Councilmember Hare?
Yeah, just one quick question. Whenever you sent that survey out, what area did you send? Did you send it Fayetteville, or did you send it just downtown?
To Fayetteville, so anybody in Fayetteville could respond to it.
And we only had, what'd you say, 45?
We had 45 in-person residents, and then the survey, we had 92 respondents.
All right. Thank you.
So if I may, I was at that in-person meeting, and what was interesting, when they had the concepts, especially for housing and life around, there was a very diverse group of age there. And as you would see them walk up, the parent would say, I like this, but then you would have the child that came home from college that would say, you know, I like this, when they were kind of away from their parents. And as the conversation started, you could see where the parents were like, okay, if this is what it's going to take to get them back here, and they start explaining it, then they started moving over to that section of where the younger people that were getting ready to start their lives, that were coming back to Fayetteville. So what I learned out of that is these surveys are great, but it has to be with people face-to-face and having the conversations, instead of people at a tables just saying, what I like is different than what Councilmember Davis is going to like. So I think as we move on through this, we need to keep that in mind and have conversations to say, why does a 20- and 30-year-old want this? They want different things than we want. So that was just what I saw in it. Thank you. Go ahead.
So as I mentioned earlier, we've partnered with MKSK Studios, who has done the kind of conceptual drawings, focusing on the physical aspect of the site. And working with them, our team has created three preliminary redevelopment scenarios that align all of this information that we just went through: the desire for mixed-use space, for green space, and also doing that within the bounds of what we think is going to be manageable by the real estate market. At a high level, we'll go through each of these three concepts individually, but at a high level, I want to name some similarities between all three of them. So first off, I just want to emphasize this over and over again, the E.E. Smith House does not get touched in any of these sites. It is part of the site, no matter what, and it will remain an important aspect of the site. And the goal of all of these concepts, there are multiple goals, but one of the goals of all these concepts is to make sure the E.E. Smith House is celebrated, and there's really good connections to it, and opportunities for them to expand their programming.
If I may, the mayor is on the phone, and he had a question. Mr. Mayor, can you hear us?
I can, thank you. I was going to say I could have waited till the end, but I wanted to ask him, in your analysis, how important do you see having more residential development downtown playing into the restaurant, the entertainment, and the quality of space that you said the respondents were concerned with, or your analysis?
Yes, so just to repeat the question and make sure everybody heard it, the question is how important is, do we think the adding residents downtown will be to supporting the downtown retail life, bringing more of those cultural and entertainment uses? For us, it is incredibly important, because one of the other things that we learned beyond just the fact that a lot of people only come to downtown for special events, when we were at that public meeting and I was asking people, how often do you come downtown? When do you come? They always say, well, I come for work, and that's about it. And so having people who are living closer to downtown, that can serve those restaurants outside of the hours of nine to five, will be huge for attracting more retailers and supporting the existing retailers who are already downtown.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Can I add to the question that, as part of our analysis, we look at market feasible uses to see what a developer will bring to the table based on organic demand? And so the mix of uses you see on the slide, in the three diagrams, reflect that demand. And multifamily residential being one of them, that creates value on the site that allows the rest of the development to move forward. This is a national trend. It's not unique to Fayetteville. This is something we see in all the cities we work in, is that oftentimes, when you're doing an infill development like this, especially in today's market, multifamily is a major driver in making the rest of the development work financially. And so as you'll see, when Austin gets into the next few slides, each of these concepts presents a meaningful amount of multifamily residential that allows everything else to function.
So I have one more question from Councilmember Honduras.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Based on your work so far, I know we got several slides left, and then there's a whole nother deck. What, in your opinion, is the highest and best use for this 9.33 or whatever acres site?
Yeah, so we are working on quantifying the highest and best use and coming to a number, and that is going to be part of our next phase of work. But from a descriptive perspective, what Imran just said is what we would see is the highest and best use: a mixed-use development that focuses on residential, multifamily, maybe townhomes, and adds that retail base. There can be some limited sort of institutional uses and maybe office uses on the side, but really focusing on adding residents, bringing and supporting that retail base is where we see this going, in addition to supporting the public uses that will also be on-site.
Thank you. My challenge is, and there's no question that the need for housing is real, and we need housing, there's no question about that. If a client came to me to market this property for highest and best use, I don't know that residential would be one that I would consider. And the challenge, why, is when we get rezoning requests, the applicant submits rezoning from SF6, which is a residential detached zoning, to MR5, which is a multifamily or mixed-use zoning like this one. And the opposition usually mentions certain things. One is high traffic on the roadway. Gillespie Street has just as much, if not more, traffic than, say, Rose Hill Road. Another concern where residents in opposition of rezoning requests have reservation concerns is residential adjacent to industrial. So isn't all the land to the west, on the other side of the roadway tracks, industrial? So we are, if this moves forward, because to me, on this slide here, option one, two, or three are all mixed-use and residential with other retail and other things. So it's six in one hand, half a dozen in the other. They're all similar in that regard. But what we're saying is what the residents want, which is what we want, would be to have residential, high-density residential, mixed-use, in-between high-traffic roadway, a major corridor like Gillespie Street, and industrial. I just want to make sure I'm understanding that. That's what we're saying. Okay. Second, my other question is regarding the survey. You said there was an in-person meeting, there was about 45 people in attendance, and then there was an online, I guess, survey, there was another 92? So if my math's correct, that's about 137 total. I would have questions on how the online survey was marketed, because I don't know that enough residents participated. But out of a municipality or city that has a population to the tune of 209,500 people, would you say 137 is the accurate sample size?
So I would say that the event was well-attended, from our experience hosting a lot of these events, and the survey response received a meaningful number of responses, from our experience submitting these online surveys. So I feel good about the amount of input that we got, and of course, that will not be the last time that people have an opportunity for input on this site. There will be future opportunities as the project moves through the process, and this being one of them, where more people get to learn about the site, and then provide more feedback, either through you all or directly to the city department on this. But given our experience hosting these types of meetings and these surveys, the response rate we got is pretty much in line with what we usually see for participation.
Well, your answer's different than what I'm asking, I think. So you're saying it's on par with similar events and similar requests for survey, or when you publicly release a survey. But what I'm asking is, is that an adequate sample size for almost 210,000 people? Or what would be, if I ask it a different way, scientifically speaking, how many respondents would you need to have a more accurate survey of 210,000 residents to make it a more, not just scientific, but a more adequate representation of the 210,000 people?
I think I follow your question, and I think perhaps where there's a need for clarification is that the highest and best uses were not derived solely from these survey responses. The highest and best use outcome that you see on the diagrams is from a data analysis that our firm did of actual activity in the local market. So the residential demand, for example, the retail demand, those are all numbers that we estimated based on recent activity, recent absorption levels, recent development, what we see as the supply and demand pipeline in Fayetteville. Now, the survey responses, the other feedback that we got, I believe, helped inform the overall vision, but also helped inform what we think is a balanced site, in which you have amenities for the community, that really strengthen the overall character of downtown and make the site an attractive place for residents, for visitors, for workers, all the different characters and uses that I think you all are looking for in downtown. Does that help clarify a little bit of how we got to this point?
It does. If you look at a few of the previous slides, I'm just curious, I'd love to see the data. Some of the data is, the source is listed here as CoStar. You know, I would love to see the data before I start questioning it, but I know we were the first license holder for CoStar in Cumberland County, and CoStar is a very good research tool, it's a good place to start, but particularly when it comes to absorption rates, rental rates, and those things, that data needs to be verified, because they're relying on brokers like me to submit data and submit it accurately, but there's no verification. So being in it a little bit, I questioned the results, but I'll save the rest of my comments for later.
Thank you, Councilmember Honduras. City Manager Hewitt?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem, and excellent questions and dialogue. We have the three concepts on the screen, and they go into a little bit more detail in the subsequent slides, and then we get to a point where we ask a fair questions, and if you will receive this up... this update. It's, I hate that y'all missed the meeting we had this morning with the staff. Always trying to plan what needs to go up against heavy industrial is always a challenge. But for the people who are in the community, and remember what was there before we acquired all of those 41 parcels, is this the right one, Chris? 41 parcels, but over there, it was all residential, and it was right up against the railroad tracks. It was designed, and we acquired it as part of the city's successful HOPE 6 efforts to create a live-work environment for people who live in the neighborhood. And so the concepts that you see in front of you, and I really appreciate Chris Colley and his team's work in bringing this to us in the questions. Councilman Honduras, you're absolutely correct, though, about trying to find out what is the highest and best use. And some of that, I think, is derived from the work that Austin and Imran have done, which talked about the delivery methods that if council moves for ultimately, once we get the final report, which I think is due sometime in December, or is it January?
The final report, we're anticipating it being completed by November.
November. And so, once that is received by council, but their, their work proposed two different delivery methods. One is a public-private partnership, or the city can just float an RFP and see what comes up. One of the interesting things was the night that we had that public forum, I sat in the parking lot because the bottom literally fell out of the sky. To think that there were 45 people who showed up and attended in that gale, and, and really, I think, says something to the, the interest level, not only for this site, but also the interest that the community has developed when we start looking at items that council's doing, like with Merkison Choice, where you're asking people's participation. And so I, I would fully, but we knew, we knew, I said it this morning, and I've said it before, looking at the amount of participation we have, the council always wants more, as do we. And I think armed now with potentially three concepts, when we put it out, put it out again, I think that you will have more interest. But it's always going to be a challenging site, and I know that Councilmember Green, I'm going to lean on her a little bit, but right across the railroad track and some of those other areas, if you were in Glenwood South, if no one, I went to school there, if you were in Glenwood South in that part in West Street, that was industrial. That was, it wasn't heavy industrial, but it was industrial. It was like a no man's land. And driving through this weekend, it is the exact entertainment district that the mayor alluded to in his call as well. So this might be the first domino to fall in that corridor for us to do the revitalization. Since we started acquiring the property, we had very interesting overtures at least three times, I believe, Chris, from the Housing Authority, who wanted to put some type of senior housing there, but the site was a little bit too small for the money and the need that they had. We have had some preliminary conversations with others, including the county, about whether it might be a second location for, an option for some type of government building that would be right there as well, still connected to downtown. But I think, again, I don't want to belabor this for the point, but you've got three different slides. If you can go to the first concept and just kind of look at it on the screen. I'm not sure if the people at home can see this on the screen. I think they can see this on screen. And if you'll go to the next concept as well, around all of these, and Chris gave us this briefing this morning, is a park. And so ideally, except for when the train is coming through or something else, this would be anchored by green space, and it would be multifamily. And it is also still walkable to downtown. The next one, please, unless you want, and then the final one, I think, which is, I think, your questions. Next steps. Not to, again, not to speed this along, but really, this was designed as an update for you, final report coming out in November, December. I think we're going to ask for guidance. I think Councilman Behandros is, is basically saying when we go back out, we need to try to go back out and for wider effort, and we'll ask each of you as well. Some of the things we've done successfully, Councilmember Harry remembers, is that we would give each of you 25 invitations. We would ask you to go out and say, will you personally ask 25 people to attend the meeting? Will you personally ask 25 people? So that, because it's hard to get people out some nights, but we can definitely do that to try to boost those numbers. But I, I'll release the floor now.
Okay, thank you. So I have Mr. Mayor on the phone for a question, and then we'll go to Councilmember Davis.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Protem. So I just wanted to know, we've done a lot of these studies for these various corridors, and I just want to know, are you privy, or did you take a look at, like, the Warehouse District study that we did some years ago? Are you combining any of those thoughts in this plan, including maybe some of the urban, urban development plans we had a few years back?
Yes, we are.
Just wanted to make sure we were capitalizing on some of that, you know, equity we've already invested in some of these ideas.
Yeah, we have made sure to go back over some of the background materials through this process to make sure we're not recreating the wheel, and we're also learning lessons from prior attempts to develop this site.
Are you good?
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis?
Yes, thank you. Before I accept this report, so how, how did you guys do the survey? Like, what avenues did you send it out through? And did the city do, send out as well? How, how did you guys do your distribution of the information to get to the survey?
Yes, so it was all done through the city's platforms, through the city's social media pages, through your newsletter. So we developed the survey questions, but it was distributed through the city.
Interesting, okay. I'll go ahead and move to receive this report.
Okay, we're in discussion. Councilmember Benevente?
Thank you. I'm going to use my discussion time, just ask a question, because I was, that was the reason I raised my hand. I'm glad that the Smith House is included in a lot of the mock-ups of what the space could look like. I want to ask the folks that are working on this if they can help me understand what sort of either requirements we can make of potential developers, or whether this is a question that needs to just be put to the developers for the city to make an investment. But having visited the Smith House, I think, two or three, maybe four times in the past six months for different events, there's a lot of outward facade improvements that are needed. Talked to the museum curators that, you know, there was investment made to kind of outfit one of the rooms, but that the house has, I think, four or five rooms, none of which are really accessible at this moment. And so if all this dollars, all these dollars are going into investing in the area around it, what would be the best way that we can see some of that investment also go into upfitting or making more attractive, that historical landmark, either with, you know, some developer, or either on the developer's side or on the city's side?
Thank you, Councilmember Benevente. One of the items that, that's Austin, the mayor, and Michael Gibson is somewhere here as well, but I'll take a stab at that. Recently had a conversation with the senior staff that all of our museums, all of our facilities, we have got to beef that up. And so we are actively talking to our partners at ASOM, and we'll reach out to the folks over at the Arts Council as well for exhibit designers, so that we can actually have period pieces. Would not even rule out the effort of starting soon to ask people who have heirlooms if they are willing to donate them, so that we can outfit some of the rooms over there as well to be more decorative. But one of the tasks that we have working on is to find a museum designer of sorts, because we need to freshen up all of the exhibits that we have at the Veterans Park now, which is almost 15 years old. We could use some professional assistance as we move forward with reopening the Market House, as well as the Transportation Museum, and of course, E. E. Smith as well. But, and I was looking at, I'm probably going to be asking council to go ahead and program a certain amount of money in every upcoming budget, so that we would either, either be able to pool money or be able to keep those exhibits fresh, so that when you're coming in, it's not just the great stuff that staff does, but it's something, as you said, that is really representative of the time and something that'd be worthy of a person coming to, like they do at the ASOM, or they do at the Arts Council, something curated. But that's something that we're working on right now.
All right.
Well, I guess, just to clarify, because I think you said there were some other staff members there, is this something that is separate and apart from this project? Because obviously, with all this interest in developing that square, I like to believe that this would be sort of the time to strike when the iron is hot. But from your answer, it sounds like maybe you're saying that, that's a separate conversation entirely. And so I guess really my question is, does it have to be a separate conversation entirely if we're already going to be doing some, making some moves on that corner? I guess, trying to ask more directly, is there a way that we can incorporate some improvements to the Smith House as a part of this specific project?
We can. I would say it would be something that is separate, but we, we hear you, and I see Adam taking notes as am I on this, and we will get back to you and the council on that as, as, just directly as to what our plans are, as it relates to that, and see if there's availability to do something sooner. Specifically, though, this update that they're looking at, I hope it comes back in November or December with saying that the time is now for us to move forward with an RFP. But an equally valid answer may be that you recommend that we sit on the project because the market is not right for it at the moment. Is that not correct? And so I would, I would prefer to meet your interest as well as, again, I think the interest that I had expressed of us looking at all of our museums, is to decouple that, but not lose sight of what you've said and be able to answer it for you, hopefully within 30 days or less, if Adam and Michael are listening, if we can circle back to council on that, and I'll give an update on that, at an upcoming manager's update on the city council meeting.
All right, so.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Are we ready? All those in favor? Or did you want to speak?
I have a quick comment, Mayor Protem. Thank you. And I wasn't going to say anything until our city manager made a comment that I wanted to bring to everybody's attention. When we took our last League Municipalities Conference in Tampa, I believe it was, I was invited to take a tour of a private-public partnership that they had somewhere on the boardwalk, where they had probably 10,000 square feet of rental space at the bottom, whether it was for clothing, whether it was for retail, whether it was for restaurants. Above it, they probably had 20 multifamily apartments on top of it, right adjacent to the boardwalk. They had community event space where they rented it out to artists who can play. You're shaking your head like you know what I'm talking about. Where they can play and give, provide entertainment for all those people downtown. There's a lot of ways that we can use this private partnership to grow our city. And I tell people all the time, if you don't have a booming downtown, you don't have a booming city. So we need to make sure we're doing all that we can to give the people what they want, and that is growth in the city of Fayetteville. And one more comment, when I left Tampa, it was probably a mile from where the hotel was. It probably took us 40 to 50 minutes to drive one mile. So traffic is never a reason for us not to grow. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Councilmember Thompson. Okay, can I get a raise of hands of who's accepting the report? Councilmember Honduras, are you with us?
Green.
Okay, Councilmember Benevente, I heard Green. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Councilmember Honduras is, he's green. Okay, that is unanimous. Thank you so much. All right, y'all, let's go to 6.02. It is 3 o'clock. We're on number two. Let me repeat myself. It's 3 o'clock. We're on number two. We get to see you again, Mr. Colley?
Just for the IT piece.
That's okay. Yep. Receive the Fayetteville State University update on the Memorandum of Understanding for Catalyst Site One.
Madam Mayor, Protem, and council, how are you? I was asked to kind of give an update on our master plan, and so I've handed a copy of that out to each, each and every one of you. With, with me is our Vice Chancellor for External Affairs, Military Relations, Wesley Fountain, and Vice Chancellor, CFO, Kenny Spade, here as well, began to be here to answer any questions here. And so, want to give you an update here on the growth and expansion won't be before you long. And so, want to, want to provide you that 10-year master plan. Many of you know, I came on the scene here March 15, 2021, some would say with a bang. And so, what you see here is 2023, 2033, 10-year master plan, and year two of this FSU campus master plan. Some of you have been part of master plans, and what we've been very intentionally is that we were not going to just have a, a lot of photos and images in a booklet, and then you put it in a, in a file and, and get cobwebs and dust. And so each, each one of these pages are very real, and, and I'll, I'll show you what we, what we mean by that. So, so the capital project milestones, and so this is very important. So March 15, 2021, we, we came on the scene here. We, we needed major capital investment, and so we went to work. And I'm happy to say that November 2021, we secured these funding, this funding, all of it, for, for Fayetteville State University. And so with the securing, we need to get to implementing and get to constructing. And so that's what we've been, we've been doing now until then. So projects completed, and we were happy about this. Bronco Pride Hall, we see a couple of handsome faces there, Councilman Davis, that young man there and the mayor cut a ribbon, a couple of representatives from the council. And we're happy to say that we have 336 students that are, that are in Bronco Pride Hall as we speak, and long overdue, and really excited about that. $50 million project. As you all know, Bronco Midtown, and we, we see that not just as an FSU project, that is a city, that is a Murchison project. And we, we're there, we're a partner, and that's a, that's a community project, and we're, we're mighty proud of it. And onward, onward and forward there, you all cut the ribbon, you took the, some of the confetti out your hair, and we celebrated, and then we, we're thinking that we're, we're doing a pretty good job there, city officials. In progress, Health and Wellness Center, March 2026. And you see some of the steam, the steel up, and we're on, we're on, we're on schedule, and we're really excited. You all led the way here with the senior citizen on the left, and we're going to have a Health and Wellness Center on the right. It is going to be a beautiful gateway. As we stated in 2021, it will be a, a beautiful partnership and gateway with the city and Fayetteville State University, on to the MERC. And 24,000 square foot, and we had, we have another partner, as many of you were there, with Cape Fear, making investment here. This is what collaboration is all about, and we're really excited about it. March 2026, we'll be cutting the ribbon and onward and forward. College of Education, this time next year, we'll be cutting the ribbon. But I want to give you all an update. And I see the city manager here. He may not remember, but one of the few months on the job, he and the mayor had told me, he had told our leadership team about Langdon. So I know we talked about the MERC, but they had talked to us about some aspirational goals on Langdon. We had forgot about that. So I want to unveil a little, a few things here that we were able to package here with the construction here, a college of education I wanted to share with city council. So this will be the gateway coming from Ramsey on to Langdon, as we're coming. from Ramsey on to Langdon as we're coming on to see, to view the College of Education. That's that's what it's going to look like. This will be the east campus entry on to College of Education there off Langdon. And this is something that we're really excited about. It's an aerial shot. So on the campus, we're able to, we had a good bid day. And so we're, we're very mindful of entrepreneurs, and we wanted to create a space in place. And so in the spirit of Bronco Nation, we want to create a space called the Shoe. Meet Me at the Shoe. And so what you see there is six, what you call to be food trucks. And you see the trees there, and you see places where you can sit, eat. And we're really excited about the opportunity where we'll have some, some opportunities for local businesses to be able to be on the campus during the course of the week, game day, basketball, football, be able to be on the campus here and be a part of that community again, all on Langdon. So 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 doing what we can on merchandising, but also want to stimulate as much as we can on Langdon. In between, between $50 million here with the residence Bronco Pride Hall and the $70 million, the College of Education, that's 120 if you're counting, we want to really stimulate as much as we can here on the Langdon as well, parlaying that with the merchandising. So never forgot what you said, city manager, the mayor, you're listening. And again, this is Fayetteville State University doing our very best to to be a good partner here with the city and our local, local officials. This time next year, meet us at the Shoe. New parking deck, September 26. And we cannot wait for this parking deck. It is very much needed. So it'll be a month after, projected a month, about a month after the College of Education here. So it's very important that we keep these projects on time, and we're really, really excited about it. You all know that, again, one of the projects that we did with the College Foundation, five-year investment, $3.5 million, some major reinvestment here, UPA apartments. So we're going to re-beautify these apartments. That's 346, 46 units. So we're, we're not going to be an eyesore. We're going to, we're going to, we're going to beautify and do our part here along the Merk. And so more to come, more to come there as well. So projects underway, this is the last one here, Military Academic Center. This is our oldest building on the campus, 1920s, the Cook Building. It's the oldest building, but we're really, really proud of our double-down commitment here with our military community. And we're going to do a total renovation, about $11 million, and August 2028. Now, what's important about that date, and again, look at the book, 2023, 2033, 2028, this will be the cap end of our major construction. So essentially, five years in 10 years. So we've been steady, we've been focused, and we're excited about the process and the and the progress that we're making. So we're really, 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 really excited. So again, Bronco Pride Hall was really, really important for us, city. We are a state institution, so so we do have some investors that we have to make sure that we satisfy the state legislature. So it was really important for us to get this project first on the ticket and get it done. And we were able to do that. We have a major announcement come September 30. You'll be getting the invite. We really want you to be there. Because before that Lebanon game that, we're going to have some of our major state legislators, one in the House, one in the Senate, that we coming down and take a tour of the progress that we made so far on the campus of Fayetteville State University. As you can see, we at Fayetteville State University, if you look at our master plan, 2028, we would have filled all acreage of our campus. And our residential, as of August, you were there, is complete. And they will see that. And as I hope that during the tour, maybe they will meet and hear and see and hear from some of you around Catalyst Site One. Response as to what we've been doing here upon their investment, and I think a real great opportunity. They are really excited about the kind of growth, how we've executed. They've been hearing about our partnerships. They've been seeing and hearing, and they're coming down to see what all the fuss and excitement is all about. And so September 30, you'll be hearing more about that. And I'll, I'll stop there. And again, I have our CFO and Vice Chancellor of External Affairs with me as well. But we're really excited. I'll say this, I'll say this, and I'll end with this, and it'll be a kind of a teaser here. Well, we today was a census. So last year, we announced, first ever, 7,100 students enrolled at Fayetteville State University. Tomorrow, we will announce another historical number, add another 500 students. So Fayetteville State University, we have 7,628 students enrolled. So when I say to the city of Fayetteville, when I say to you, council, like never before, I just talked about the blueprint, like never before, we're leaning in, and we're saying, we're busting out the seams. And like never before, partnership like this is very, very important. And I'll end there. Thank you.
Thank you. So before I go to Councilmember Davis to receive the report, we have Councilmember Banks McLoughlin and Councilmember Hare and Councilmember McNair.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Chancellor.
Yes, ma'am.
Congratulations on the achievement. I know the community hasn't always been so welcoming when you first arrived, but that just shows your leadership and you are a visionary along with the team at Fayetteville State. So I just wanted to just make more of a comment. Congratulations. I'm excited, just as an elected official, to be part of, you know, the partnership within the university. I'm excited. This college, I don't know how many times we received major announcements within the last past few years. So that's great. And as I look forward to it, because that's strengthening our community. When I've traveled to places, I've heard so much positive feedback regarding Fayetteville State. So you have definitely put us on the map. And also, thank you for supporting our military because that has definitely played a major role. So I just wanted, again, just to commend you on all the work that you and your staff have been doing for the university and our students. And I look forward to the continued investment and growth here.
Thank you for the partnership, Councilwoman. Thank you so very much.
Councilmember Hare?
Yeah, Chancellor, I was looking at your, oh, excuse me, I was looking at your diagram here of major capital projects, and I, I see where the deck is going in, right across from Liddy Gym. I played a lot of basketball in Liddy Gym growing up as a boy. But the deck.
Girlhood.
But the deck is a perfect location. I really think so, because knowing the campus as I do, growing up, walking through it, playing on the baseball field back in the day, I mean, just so much about the campus, I'm familiar with as a child. It's not that far. Soon as you turn in, you got a deck to park in. So I think that's a perfect location. I've visited many campuses, and sometimes the decks are more in the middle of the campus. And I think this is a lot closer. So congratulations, and I like what we see.
Well, I can't tell you, and I appreciate it, but I, I gotta tell you, all of that y'all see, we're consulting with your, your staff. We're consulting with the city. We are, we are partners. So so I appreciate what you say, but it is we. It is the collective we. And y'all know it. Every time that, every time we are announcing something, y'all standing right there with, with scissors.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and y'all are right there, because it is, it is the power of we. And I can't tell you how, how, how much that encourages us and how much stronger we are as a result of that.
And I like hearing that, because we have a great, great, great city staff.
Absolutely.
Counsel, I'm sorry, Councilmember McNair?
I just want to say thank you, Chancellor, for such a great job that you were doing here. I'm smiling over here. I'm just getting excited about District Seven, because you have already used up all your land on Merkison Road. And we have a lot of land in District Seven.
Yes, ma'am.
And so keep us in mind, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Keep us in mind. And then once Councilmember Davis make his motion, I will second that.
Yes, ma'am.
How you doing, Chancellor?
How you doing, Mayor?
I was listening to your great report. We do have, after Councilmember McNair, Councilmember Thompson, and then Honduras and Davis.
Chancellor, great job.
Thank you, sir.
I didn't have anything to say until I heard the Mayor Protim and yourself talk about we. Well, we know that you're busting at the seams, but the city of Fayetteville is part of that we. And that we I'm talking about is our Brexton Road Choice Initiative. I know you've been talking to our staff with Chris Colley. I know that this is an opportune time for us to make sure that we get our application in, tell them about the great things that you're doing and how you're busting at the seams, so we can help you revitalize that entire lower part of Merkison.
Bring that together.
Yes, sir. God bless you.
We're going to get it this time.
Thank you, Councilmember Thompson, Councilmember Honduras.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chancellor, good job. Could you do me a favor, back up one slide, please? That, my question is really more for staff. That red outline there for Catalyst Site One is different than what we have in our MOU. I was just curious why the discrepancy, or if anybody could explain that to me.
It's just a simple oversight, I guess, in drawing the line. The line does track down Merkison Road. And that area that's on the, I guess, can't tell north, south, east, or west on that, but the smaller portion where Pay Funeral Home used to be at, that is not part of the MOU.
Yeah, so where Merkison Road is, all the land to the west of there, none of that we own, correct?
We own almost everything within that red. What is that? I won't say trapezoid. I don't want to show my math. But there is a portion of some land down at the bottom that we do not own, where I think there's a, what is it, billboard or something else like that? Is that correct, Chris?
I don't think the city of Fayetteville owns the northwest corner of that intersection, but I could be mistaken. And this, this, on our, in our CCAM, the, what's highlighted in the MOU is even less than that. So I just want to make sure the map is correct, whichever map we use.
All right, that's Councilmember Honduras. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you for coming, sir. Phenomenal job. There is one announcement that I did not hear, and that is homecoming, because I know we have a listening audience. When is homecoming, so that the audience can know homecoming is coming up?
Yeah, help me out. VC, VC Fountain?
October 11.
October 11. What's the whole week? That's that, that's that Saturday you're referring to? So, Councilman Davis, you would put me on the spot. And so, give me one second. So, it kicks off on Sunday, October 5. It's Saturday, October 11.
All right. Thank you, sir. And at this time, I'll go ahead and make the motion to receive this report.
All right. That's the most by Councilmember Davis. Is there a second by Councilmember McNair that wants to take Fayetteville State to the West Side? All right, discussion. Would like to have just a brief, just a brief comment. Chancellor, thank you. I was listening to it on the way in. You know, we were listening to how it is as we, as we look to, to promote our city. Seventy, what'd you say your new population number is? 7628. 7,628 and growing.
Last year, Mayor, was 7,100. And we'll be making.
It's an additional 500.
That's correct.
Students, potential citizens that we have an opportunity to sell our community firsthand for the first time, many of them, first time to Fayetteville. So we definitely see the value of our, of our partnership. And there are citizens, too, while they're here. 7,600 people at that university is phenomenal. But I wanted to point out, too, something else important that I think we've covered. The previous report talked about the city is trying to inspire or invigorate growth on the Robeson Street section near Gillespie, where we got that presentation. Fayetteville State is definitely the largest stakeholder, largest landowner, biggest footprint, and on the Merkison end. So you all are real, could be two potentially bookends in the city in a major corridor between, you know, the beginning of Merkison and as the city brings online, these things at Gillespie and everything in between. So it's a, it's a great partnership. And I saw, you know, over 150, 60 million in capital improvements, just as we're looking to try to get a development plan. I know that you're, you're going through similar steps to try to, to try to build out Catalyst Site as you expand your footprint for the university. So I just want to make sure, and I brought that up, council and, and Mr. Colley in his office, make sure that as the consultants are looking at this, they're looking at everything, that if there's someone that speaks to a possible use for the site that we have in city center, then maybe there's an opportunity to get their ideas and insight on what you're trying to do over Fayetteville State. It looked very similar between housing and, and retail and livable and green space. I think as you all are the two bookends, we need to make sure that there's complete communication and collaboration between our, our two departments. But proud of what we're seeing and keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council.
All right. All right, councilors there, show your hands for vote. Those in favor of receiving the report? All right. Motion care. Okay, all right. Thank you, Chancellor.
Thank you.
All right. All right, Council, moving on. I heard Mayor Protim. Oh, Chancellor, did you bring us these socks?
No.
Oh. I was about to say, you came bearing gifts. All right. Moving to 6.03. I saw Mayor Protim was reminding us of, we're 90 minutes in, and we're on item number three. So let's see if we can push that through. Brooke, I'll go to you, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Brooke Redding in the city manager's office. Today, I've got our consultants online from the Wilson Center, and I'll bring them up in just a second. So as you know, Shot Spotter was first contracted by the city in December 2022, and full activation began in September 2023, covering three one-square miles of areas. The city council approved a one-year contract renewal last fall, and at that time directed staff to Nish Gate an independent evaluation of the technology's effectiveness and value to the community. So today, we're pleased to present the results of that evaluation. The Wilson Center for Science and Justice at Duke University has completed an 18-month study of the system's deployment in Fayetteville. Their report examines alert data, police response times, 911 response times, 911 call comparisons, and related case outcomes. And this briefing is in response to counsel's direction and is intended to support your ongoing review of the ShotSpotter program as the current contract approaches its expiration later this month. Online, we're joined by Dr. Jessica Gettleman from the Wilson Center, who will provide an overview of their findings and be available to answer any questions that you have.
Yes, sir. Councilmember here?
Yeah, I was just thinking to expedite things a little, Mayor. This is just a, we had the small group meetings on this. I assume everyone was a part of the small group. And they gave us their thoughts and their evaluations. Then, I don't know if we had it in the public anywhere. It's like I remember some people standing. So I was just wondering, would it be necessary for them to give us a full reanalysis again?
Yes.
On what we just received a few weeks ago?
Yes, sir, Mayor.
I thought they had given it out. No? Okay. I just thought I remember seeing people stand up, talking to us about it. Okay, I got it wrong. Okay.
Just one second. We're trying to get the presenters up on camera.
I got it wrong. I was just trying to get some clarity.
Hopefully, I'm here. I'm Brandon Garrett. I teach at Duke Law School. I wasn't there for the presentation last month, but Jess Gettleman, Dr. Gettleman, was. And yeah, no, we can repeat as little or as much as you would like for this more public audience. But you have a report. We have some slides summarizing what we found. And mostly, we wanted to be here to answer your questions.
No, sir. You can move completely forward. I was just trying to get some clarity. I was trying to get some clarity on it. And I wanted to make sure that the, wasn't sure if the public had heard it. So proceed, sir. Thank you.
I have a tech question. Can I change these slides or no?
If you just say next slide, I'll hit the next for you, sir.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks so much. Well, I just wanted to thank the city of Fayetteville. I want to thank you all on the city council. I want to thank the city manager's office for asking us to do this. You know, I'm a law professor. I teach law students things like evidence, the chance to do some research that could inform you all on an issue of practical importance. That's what we're here for at the Wilson Center. And again, we're grateful for that opportunity. We're also grateful for a lot of the help that Kimberly Richards in the police department gave us, both in understanding the data and sharing some data. So we just, and finally, we want to thank the folks separately, separate from our work, the Robert Institute at UNC Charlotte has been doing work to inform you all. And they've been looking at related questions, different questions, but it was very helpful to us to consult with them as we were doing this work. So maybe we could just switch to the second slide as just a brief overview of what we looked at, what we found. If a couple more overview slides, I'll just talk about it very briefly, and then I'll hand things over to Dr. Gettleman, who will talk about some more detailed findings. Just big overview. We, you know, looked at an eighteen-month time period, like you heard, the first eighteen months of this pilot of the ShotSpotter system in the three different districts in Fayetteville where the system was rolled out. And so obviously, there are shooting-related events all over the city. For better, for worse, we have more data about those three areas and making comparisons with the rest of the city not really directly possible. But we can say some things about what happened, particularly in those, the areas where ShotSpotter was piloted. So what we can say is that we have information about alerts that are received not through ShotSpotter, but through just a traditional call to 911. And sometimes there is no 911 alert, but there was a ShotSpotter alert. Sometimes there's both. And so basically, although officers are, reach a crime scene with the same speed, when they get information from a 911 call versus a ShotSpotter alert, the time it takes to get that alert to them is much less, because with a 911 call, you have to talk to the person and ask them, well, where did you hear the noise? Where are you right now? And so police response times were shorter when there was a ShotSpotter notification. Now, the more interesting question as well, does getting to the crime scene faster, is it a crime scene? Does getting to that spot faster produce noticeably better investigative outcomes, more productivity? That we couldn't answer, and there's evidence that it doesn't. But
Can you repeat that, sir? You said there's evidence that it does or does not?
That it does not.
Getting to the crime scene faster is not better?
Well, the question is, are these actual crime scenes? Right? So one of the real challenges in our work, which I'll describe, is, well, so we know that there are more alerts in the areas where there's ShotSpotter. But are those real alerts? Are those alert, are those actual shots? And if there were actual shots, the outdoor type that ShotSpotter can pick up, are officers directed to the spot where it happened? And so what we do have is information about whether there was evidence collection that occurred at a spot that officers went to, whether it was from a 911 call or a ShotSpotter alert. And so having collected some evidence or identified a victim, or certainly making an arrest, that suggests that there was something there, that something productive happened at that spot. A more sort of legal and direct indication that something happened at that spot is if there's an incident report filed by the officer. And so suggesting that they identified a particular crime that happened. And so that would be another indicator that the alert was a useful one. The alert resulted in a, in a incident being generated. So, and we'll talk more about what we found, but the really productive alerts were actually the ones where there was both a ShotSpotter alert and a 911 call. The ShotSpotter-only alerts, very low productivity in terms of there being an incident generated or something else happening, like some evidence being collected, a victim being identified, something like that. But one problem in our work, and the last bullet point there before the acknowledgements, is that there was real unevenness in the, in the incident data. Sometimes incidents were added later. They didn't always reflect an officer determining that there was a crime on the scene. And we don't have the kind of information that you'd want to actually be able to confirm alerts, to say, well, how many of these resulted in arrests? Or even better outcomes further downstream, convictions, where cases cleared out of alerts that came from ShotSpotter or a 911 call or both. We don't have that kind of information. And there is less information about the 911 calls. There isn't even information for those about, in response to those calls at a crime scene, where was evidence collected, was a victim identified? And so there are just inherent limitations to the data, making it not easy to answer the most important question, which is, to what extent are the new alerts that one gets through the system producing tangible, good outcomes in investigations of confirmed firearms-related events? So there's a couple more quick introductory slides, and I'll turn things over to Dr. Gettleman. I could switch to the next slide, pass the overview to overview of firearms events in Fayetteville. Maybe it'd be easier if I could switch slides. Can you advance the slides?
Are you on the right slide, sir?
One slide after that.
Yes, there we go. Okay, that's one. So just a highlight there that during the entire time period that we're looking at, gunshot-related incidents were on the decline in Fayetteville. And so in general, the overall trend across the city, which we all know better than we do, is that firearms-related incidents went up in 2020, like they did in a lot of places, like in Durham where I live. And they've been steadily declining since. This just shows the trend, both within these, the three districts where ShotSpotter was piloted, and the trend citywide, similar trends. Let's switch to the next slide. One concern, I know it was a topic in Durham, would rolling out a system like ShotSpotter, would people hear about it and figure, well, we don't need to call 911 anymore because there's something automated in place? There's no evidence that people stopped calling 911 or that that information declined, which is important, because like I briefly mentioned and will show later, the information that comes from 911 calls is very valuable. And so you wouldn't want people to think, we don't have to call 911 anymore. There's, it doesn't look like that. It looks like the trend is pretty stable. You see more alerts coming in through ShotSpotter in the zones where it was implemented. But you see roughly the same numbers of calls, although in general, you're seeing fewer incidents involving firearms during the whole time period. Okay, let's switch to the next slide. So I'll turn things over to Dr. Gettleman now and meet myself, although I'm in a quiet place. I will switch to some, just some of the main findings that we highlight in this report.
Thank you so much, Brandon. And thank you to all of you for inviting us to do this report in the first place and to talk to you about results today. So, okay, so this next slide currently, first, I want to orient you to the plot, because the plot on this slide and the next slide are set up the same way. So on the x-axis, you see the three ShotSpotter zones in Fayetteville, the three zones that ShotSpotter was installed in. And then the part that just says Fayetteville means the rest of the city, so that accounts for any part of Fayetteville not accounted for by the Campbellton, Central, or Cross Creek ShotSpotter zone. On the y-axis, you see time in seconds. In this case, it's time to dispatch. So if the bars are shorter, it took less time. So in this case, if the bars are shorter, that's good, if they're not going up as high in the y-axis. And the three different types of bars, you see, the navy bars are for a 911, for incidents that receive 911 calls only. So that's the only bar you see for the rest of Fayetteville because they didn't have ShotSpotter there. And the orange bars are cases for which police officers received both a ShotSpotter alert and a 911 call. And the yellow bars represent incidents for which police received a ShotSpotter alert only. So as you can see, officers were dispatched. They arrived on the scene much faster, specifically over two minutes faster or about 135 seconds on average, when a ShotSpotter alert was involved, regardless of whether a 911 call was also received. So whether it was a ShotSpotter alert only or a ShotSpotter alert plus a 911 call, you see that the orange and yellow bars, response times or the amount of time it takes police to dispatch to the scene is much quicker when a ShotSpotter alert is involved, as opposed to when 911 is the only source of an alert for an incident. Next slide. So this slide is set up the same way. The plot looks the same, except the time on the y-axis is much longer because it represents the time they spent on scene. So 2,400 seconds or, you know, or which equals forty minutes. The middle of that graph right there, 1,200 seconds is equal to 20 minutes. So here you can see that across all three ShotSpotter zones, officers spent the most time on scene. So after they dispatched and arrived on scene, they spent the most time investigating and remaining on the scene when they received both types of alerts for an incident. So when an incident received both a ShotSpotter alert and a 911 call, or the orange bars, compared to when they received either one alone, when they received ShotSpotter alerts only, they spent, or represented by the yellow bars, they spent an average of 11 minutes on scene. And when they received 911 calls only represented by the navy bars, they spent about 10 minutes on scene. So the amount of time they spent on scene was essentially doubled when they received both types of alerts, as opposed to one type of alert by itself. Next slide. So now there's somewhat of a different setup, but somewhat similar for the two plots on this slide. And then the two plots on the next slide are set up the same way as these two. So again, you're seeing the ShotSpotter zones on the x-axis, but this slide and the next slide just looks at data from the Ground Truth Tracking Workbook, so just data that was collected by and for the ShotSpotter system. So we're not looking at the rest of Fayetteville with these plots, just the three different ShotSpotter zones by themselves, Campbellton, Central, and Cross Creek. So first, to speak widely to what Brandon was talking about earlier, about whether we can determine if an alert was confirmed or not, we did that by determining if they had, you know, various types of evidence, including firearms and shell casings, evidence as you see here, but also property damage evidence, which is a plot that's in the report but not shown here for time's sake, whether witnesses were interviewed, whether arrests were made, whether an incident report was created, et cetera. All of the data that went into determining confirmation is discussed in the report. But at most, only 24% of ShotSpotter-only alerts were able to be confirmed. So at the most, when an incident received only a ShotSpotter alert, at most, only about a quarter of those were able to be confirmed. And in general, as you'll see in these two plots, the two plots on the next slide and the plots that I'm not showing here but that are in the report, is any type of, any measure of productivity, any type of evidence collected or confirmation is much, much higher for ShotSpotter alerts that also were complemented by a 911 call or for cases where a ShotSpotter alert received a corresponding 911 call compared to ShotSpotter alerts by themselves. ShotSpotter alerts alone were very unproductive in terms of evidence recovery. So that's kind of general terms. Specific terms, looking at this slide, the first plot, you see the percentage of alerts where firearms were recovered. And firearms were recovered very infrequently. You actually see that none, regardless of whether there was a corresponding 911 call, were recovered in the central zone at all. But in general, more firearms were recovered in response to ShotSpotter alerts that had a corresponding 911 call as compared to those that did not. And shell casings were recovered much more frequently than firearms. And again, following this trend of shell casings were much more likely to be recovered in response to ShotSpotter alerts that had corresponding 911 calls compared to those that did not have corresponding 911 calls. And again, just to reiterate, shell casings were, these bars are much higher on this plot than other types of evidence. That was the evidence most frequently found in terms, across all categories of evidence or confirmation, was shell casings. And firearms were one of the lowest. Those were rarely recovered. Next slide. So again, these plots are set up the same way, but I do want to orient you to the y-axis. These, the numbers are a little bit lower. So instead of going up to 60%, the top one of the y-axis in the top plot is 40%, and it's 30% for the bottom plot. So this is looking at another measure of productivity, but arrests and victims specifically versus other types of evidence. So here, looking at the first plot, we see that arrests were made more frequently in response to ShotSpotter alerts that had corresponding 911 calls, again, following that trend that I talked about earlier. And looking at the second plot, victims were more likely to be identified when ShotSpotter alerts were accompanied by 911 calls as well. Again, this happened very infrequently, but still, when there was a corresponding 911 call, the outcome of the, of the police being dispatched was much more productive. And overall, across these four plots and these four kind of categories of evidence that I've shown you, as well as the ones that are in the report that we don't have time to talk about here, the Campbellton zone generally had the highest number of productive ShotSpotter alerts. In some cases, it was Cross Creek, but usually it was Campbellton, followed by Cross Creek, and then finally, the central zone. Next slide. So for some overall conclusions, as Brandon discussed earlier, gunfire incidents and gunfire-related 911 calls, the amounts of those declined across the city during the evaluation period that we looked at. And at the same time, ShotSpotter alerts increased notifications, specifically because of, you know, their existence and this, the starting within the three coverage zones. So there were more alerts overall in the three coverage zones because of the addition of ShotSpotter. In terms of response time, police officers dispatched much more quickly following ShotSpotter alerts or ShotSpotter alerts plus 911 calls compared to 911 calls alone. But we can't really assess whether this faster response time resulted in improved investigative or victim outcomes, those types of outcomes I talked about in the last few slides. And there's some evidence that there wasn't much of a relationship there. And it's also important to note that police spend more time on scene when they're dispatched in response to both types of alerts compared to either type of alert, ShotSpotter or 911 alone. And also, like I talked about in the last few slides, alerts that were confirmed by both ShotSpotter and 911 calls, or in other words, ShotSpotter alerts that were corroborated by 911 calls, were much more productive in terms of evidence collection, victim identification, and arrests. And ShotSpotter alerts alone did not really have much of a high yield in terms of productivity. Related to this, a majority of the ShotSpotter-only alerts involve detection of like one round, like a very small number of rounds, and were alerted as probable gunfire only. So one suggestion for a strategic way to prioritize ShotSpotter alerts is deprioritizing maybe these single ShotSpotter alerts that don't have 911 confirmation in order to more efficiently use police resources. And as we also talked And as we also talked about earlier, since we don't have this, like the last two slides, the last four plots I showed you, we don't have that analogous information for nine on one calls only, um, only for nine on one calls that were paired with a ShotSpotter alert. So we would, if, uh, the data from ShotSpotter from nine on one calls and from police reports were better integrated, we would be able to provide um a more direct assessment of, a more direct comparison of ShotSpotter two versus nine on one in terms of those key outcomes. And lastly, we don't offer any sort of conclusion on whether ShotSpotter's benefits exceeded, exceeded its costs. That's on our place. While ShotSpotter provided more alerts about potential gunfire than nine on one calls alone would have, and they also, it also enabled faster response times to those alerts. We can't speak to how many of those increased alerts were false alarms, or in other words, were alerts that were actually generated by something other than gunfire. And the value of these, these additional alerts and the faster response times in determining whether the benefits, do they need to be weighed against, but sharing opportunity costs in order to determine whether the benefits exceeded its costs? So we provide this information to try to help you do that to the best way, in the best way possible. So yeah, I think that's it for our slides. Um, there's our, if you want to switch to the next slide that has our emails and contact information on it, um, yeah, we're happy to take any questions.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Uh, do you have a question or comment from Councilmember Benavente?
Thank you all for being here. Uh, my first question, it comes with a little bit of context. Um, when we first piloted this program, um, we did some general research from what other communities had experienced. Um, but when we asked our police chief at the time, what were the pros and the cons? No cons were listed at all. Um, when we passed the first pilot program, a request was made to accompany it with independent evaluation. And that independent evaluation was actually not passed. We only implemented it without much of a plan. And so when the renewal came up, um, it was first offered to renew it for three years, once again, without any sort of independent evaluation. Thankfully, a majority of council um shot that down, um, did a one year revow with, for the, for renewal, and this time for the first time actually asked for independent evaluation of its efficacy. So I'm glad um that we're making some progress here. Um, but it sounds like you said it in this presentation, and I, and I, and I think you said it in the, in the private group meetings that was not mentioned here. Um, the three ShotSpotter zones that we identified, that in fact, when you look at it from a statistical standpoint, that they are not necessarily totally unique from a handful or several other areas of the city that when you account for, um, I guess, the relative median incomes compared to the rest of the city and a few other factors, that even these three zones that we claimed at at first were where they ought to go are really not statistically unique from others. Could you speak to that since that wasn't in this slide or in this slide deck?
Um, yeah, so we don't specifically, we don't have, we weren't given, we don't have access to the data about median incomes or any, or specific like demographic variables and considerations about these, about Campbellton, Cross Creek or central zones compared to the rest of Fayetteville. So uh, we can't speak to that specifically. Um, I'm not sure what.
I'm so sorry. I think that might have been from another report that was done by um the company group. I apologize. Let me, let me rephrase that question, um, because I think I, I just conflated the two.
Okay.
What I'm really, what I'm really asking is we need help in properly evaluating this. I think you guys even said that we needed better integration. Um, but I'm not sure if you guys have seen our dashboard. Have you guys got a chance to review that at all?
We did see the dashboard, um, and it provides, I mean, information within the ShotSpotter system, but doesn't, doesn't answer the questions that, and, and, and there was data from that system that we received, but it doesn't allow us to answer these larger questions about, are these alerts, you know, false alerts or correct alerts or those, those types of things?
And, and that's what I mean by we need help because we are assuming that every single alert was without a shadow of a doubt. And if you look at the dashboard, we say one hundred percent that they were in fact um incidents of crimes. Um, but again, I'm not sure, and maybe the city manager can ask, answer this, who created that dashboard? Um, because we, we tend to point to that dashboard as evidence of what the salespeople promised us, ninety seven to ninety nine percent efficacy on ShotSpotter alone. Um, but, and we, and we point to that dashboard, but it seems like that's not the case. Um, and moreover, I guess I'm, I'm trying to get you guys to maybe help us um better evaluate this because it sounds like we did not give you guys maybe all the tools that maybe some other cities that you've done this work for um had provided you because from day one, they asked for help, making sure that they were uh implementing this program in a way where evaluation could result in some better uh sort of evalu, uh answers from, from evaluators. Um, if you could kind of just give us a few more helpful hints about how to better evaluate what we're doing, because obviously my fear is that we don't really want to know the answer. We actually prefer sort of the mystery um and the myth behind what ShotSpotter could be rather than what it actually does do.
I, I guess I would say like, we, we described our report that there, there are data needs, both regarding the ShotSpotter alerts in the ShotSpotter zones, but there are also real data needs in the rest of Fayetteville. And it's obviously most firearms incidents occur in the rest of the city, the whole city, than in these three places. And so there, there are real needs in terms of understanding um how nine one one calls in the non-ShotSpotter areas translate to incidents. And do those incidents reflect things that officers observe on the scene or could they be added later? And what happens with those incidents? Uh, so there are real data needs uh for the, for the rest of the city, which is just covered by nine one one calls. Um, and you can't answer some of these other questions like, like what are the, what are the clearance rates coming out of nine one one calls about firearms? Like not just even was an incident generated, which we don't always know. Um, but what happened when an incident was generated? And uh, and so all that is really, really important and requires more data. And not every jurisdiction, Fayetteville's not alone in not being able to, to, to link what happens early on when police come to a scene with whether an incident is generated? Was there an arrest? Did the case move forward? Did something move forward in court? And so that information is really valuable. And unfortunately, Fayetteville isn't alone in not having it. ShotSpotter, there is some more information that ShotSpotter provides in that you have that information about was evidence collected, was a victim identified? There's a little bit more information about whether something happened at the scene. Um, but it's still not definitive in terms of, well, but did it result in an incident? The incident information isn't always consistent. But did I summarize it, uh, all that correctly, uh, Jess?
Yeah, I, I completely agree. And I was, I was gonna say the same thing. I think what I'll add to that is just kind of a summary of what Brandon said is that basically like to, there, there's more than this, but to boil it down to kind of like two main issues I see that would be really helpful is, you know, the ground truth tracking workbook that, you know, Kim Richards shared and is an expert on and has, you know, has all this information. If all of the columns that you had for that, which were a lot of the columns I presented, you know, firearms recovered, shell casings recovered, uh, arrests and victim information, et cetera, and more that I didn't present, if you had those analogous columns for nine on one calls, or in other words, if you were able to enter kind of results of nine on one calls in the same way that you are results of ShotSpotter alerts through the ShotSpotter system and ground truth tracking workbook, if it's through the same, for, you know, through some sort of analogous systems that we could have that same information for nine on one calls, that would be really helpful. And number two, related to that, because obviously what happened, if it, if it was, if confirmed as an incident, if it was confirmed as gunfire, depends on all those things I just said. But if there was some sort of way of assessing, of definitively assessing confirmation so that we didn't have to kind of, you know, guess at it by like, you know, looking at all possible columns, but there was, if there was a definitive like way of saying yes, the ShotSpotter alert and or nine on one call was confirmed as gunfire, number one. And number two, did that, what did that result in? Did that result in a case? You know, what did that result in downstream in the, in the rest of the criminal legal system? Uh, that would be the second thing that would be really helpful. And both of those two things together would, alone, just even those, just those two, which I realize are big things, especially the first one, but those two things would allow for a much like investigation.
No, no, no one wants to be asking law enforcement officers to do more like information collecting and fill out more paperwork, right? But to the extent that they are collecting information and are asked to fill out more paperwork or note additional things, I mean, firearms-related violence is obviously incredibly serious. And so if there's one place where you, where you might reconsider, what, what data do we want them collecting and, and because it could really help us, this is, this might be one of those places.
Well, and I hope our staff is taking note of like the recommendations that y'all are making because I think one clue that we have is that, as you said, during the evaluation period, the number of incidents have not been reduced. We have not seen sort of the uh reduction in instances of these types of um calls or crimes or, you know, um gunfire incidences over that period, over that eighteen months. Isn't that correct?
Well, we, there's an overall trend of, of declining firearms-related incidents, both in the ShotSpotter areas and citywide. And, and that, that had been occurring since, you know, two thousand twenty one. And so there, there was no new trend during the pilot period.
Your report was that researchers cannot come to a conclusion about whether ShotSpotter reduced gun violence in Fayetteville.
Right. Yeah, because there's this existing trend which didn't seem to change.
Thank you.
We can't speak to it being possible, but we can say that the trend is there.
Councilmember here.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm a little perplexed by the, the report that I'm, that I, that we're hearing, at least that I received. As more and more I listen to our police officers, especially within our uh last quarterly report, not one police objective or one police tool is a solve all for, for everything. And every part that can help, I think we need that help. When we receive our quarterly report, our quarterly report told us states that it was a good help uh to have the ShotSpotter. Once again, it's not saying that the ShotSpotter is an objective that will take care and solve all of the problems. I also disagree in what I heard about, well, if the ShotSpotter goes off and the police get there quick, I don't know how good of a thing that is. And if that's what I heard, then that's not a support system that I could, I could uh support. I think the quickest or the quicker we can get our police officers into a neighborhood uh to check something out, even if they come in to check something out and it has left the area, I think that it's a plus uh to get there. One of the things that our crime prevention specialists tell our community and our police officers tell our community, no one knows more about something that is suspicious in your neighborhood than you do. Okay? So if I see something suspicious in my neighborhood and I call, and even though depending on what that call is, if the priority of that call is on a lower level than it is on, on a top tier level, like a B and E or uh shootings or things, uh, someone that shot or something along that line, and they get there and they're gone, that's almost like saying, well, look, don't call us anymore about anything suspicious as in the neighborhood because time we get there, they may not be there. So that's a waste of time or whatever, whatever you, objective you would want to uh, uh, speak there. So I, I still believe that uh any tool, any objective, any support that we can have for our community is a plus. We need to continue to try to help our communities. Um, that's, I mean, those are some of the number one calls. Those are some of the number one conversations, Mayor, Council, that I have with my uh residents is, well, when we call uh on something suspicious where they didn't come right then, uh, this right here sort of contradicts it itself in, in, in the reporting that I'm hearing because just because you go into the neighborhood and no one is laying down bleeding from a shot or you don't pick up a dozen uh, uh, shell casings, but the, the uh, the sensor went off that something took place. I think it's a great thing when we have our police there and especially when we get them there quicker in the neighborhoods. That's my uh statement, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Yeah, so I just, to quickly respond to that, um, I completely agree with you that police arriving faster is a positive. False, like that's, that's a, in and of itself, that's a pro. I a hundred percent agree. We're not saying that that isn't a positive. All we're saying is that we can't say that faster response times led to more evidence collection or more effective outcomes in terms of evidence, victims, arrests, et cetera, because one, it's still, we're, we're still finding that ShotSpotter only alerts that aren't paired with nine on one calls are very low yield in terms of evidence and uh they're, we can't, uh, in terms of confirmation and evidence, they're, they're still very low. And um, number two, because we don't have access to how many were, you know, false positives versus true gunshots. Like we, if we had a way, if there is no column in the data where we could assess that, then we could do that direct comparison. So all we're saying is we, we can't say for sure that they arrive fast, that they're arriving faster allowed them to have a more productive evidence collection or that they were arriving faster to, you know, to only true alerts versus false alarms, because that's not the case. But that's not to say that arriving faster in general isn't a positive, because I think that it is.
All right, there we are. I was saying, yes, ma'am, thank you for your comment. And I do uh appreciate what you were saying. I, I still think there's a difference here between what uh, some of what you were advising us on or giving us information on versus uh the, the, the years that I have been as a public servant and talking to residents and them having the police within the neighborhood as quick as possible. So, but I do appreciate your comment. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, did have a comment. Thank you all, Attorney Garrett and uh, is it Attorney Gettleman? Ms. Mayor, can I go next before you, you want to go last?
Uh, no, doctor, I have my PhD on my JD.
Okay. All right. Go to Councilmember Thompson, then I'll, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a, a two quick questions because you kept talking about evidence. Is there any evidence where there was only a notification of a shot being fired? A, a person was found shot without a nine on one call, taken to the hospital and recovered? Do you have any evidence of those? Because I know there's one in Fayetteville and I know there was one on the news in Durham a couple of years ago. How come none of that information is being shared?
Um, so there's, um, that, that information actually is in the report. So there's two other victim spots that are in the report that weren't added to the presentation just for time's sake, because of the time limits we, we were given, but.
So what, say that again? So you have the evidence, but you didn't share it because of time?
It's in the report, in the report, but it's not shared. It wasn't shared in this presentation, but uh, I, so I, I can briefly discuss it for you if you want.
Please.
Because I have the, okay. So what's, what you're, what you're talking about seems the most close to our plot, percentage of alerts where first responders provided aid to victims, right? So where they showed up to victims and were able to provide aid to them. I can't say whether that aid involved hospital transport or not, but first responders, medical professionals provided aid to victims. Um, in cases where there was no corresponding nine on one call like you're talking about, right? So just a ShotSpotter alert that happened three times. Once in the Campbellton, uh, once in the Campbellton ShotSpotter zone and twice in the Cross Creek ShotSpotter zone. Um, and uh, there was um one additional time where they arrived on scene and, and the victim was dead by the time that they, they arrived, so they were unable to provide aid. Um, so if you count that, this was, you know, four instances total. If not, it was where they specifically provided aid that happened uh three total times across two of the three ShotSpotter zones.
Thank you so much, because I don't think you could put a price on somebody's life. Uh, those lifesaving measures uh secured a family, a father, a husband, a dad. I think that's important. My second question is reference to nine one one calls. You don't have a record or data where nine on one calls uh didn't result in any gunshot uh detections, no uh case shellings or, or no victims and no investigation or no data or anything. We don't have any record of that, do we?
Not for nine on one only calls that weren't also paired with a ShotSpotter alert, but for nine on one only alerts, correct? I can't speak to that. We don't have that data.
And we're, thank you very much.
Yeah, of course.
Thank, thank you. Um, before I go to Councilmember Davis and Banks-McLaughlin, um, I was just looking, so Attorney Garrett, is he still?
I'm here.
Yes, sir. I was, I was looking at your background, pretty impressive. Are you the, the one, you did some work on bail reform and? Yes, sir. I was, I was looking at your background. Pretty impressive. Are you the, the one, you did some work on bail reform and fair jury and, and uh conviction of the innocent? Were those your pieces?
I work on some other topics too. Yeah, yeah. I, I do some work uh
Yes, sir.
studying misdemeanor bail. Yeah.
Right. Um, so a- as you were presenting this, I'm, I'm kind of with Councilmember Thompson. There were, there were some things that were, were highlighted, uh, but were not necessarily um discussed in the same context. So out of the four thousand and five rounds that are, that are listed on our numbers, a thousand alerts and a thousand casings were recovered. Would you say that's a good thing for a community or, or not? Whether it came from ShotSpotter with something else or, you know, just like, it's like at my house. They tell me to, you know, lock your doors and turn your lights on outside. Do you think that turning my lights on outside is means I can leave my door unlocked? Or do I lock my door and turn my lights off outside? Or do I need to do both?
That sounds like a policing question, not a question for a law professor like me.
Oh.
Um, but obviously. Collecting, collecting evidence is, can be really useful. Uh, it, but it depends on the evidence and, and, and uh, um, and what quality it is, I guess.
So twenty-seven guns um were, were retrieved, whether it's combination of nine-one-one and ShotSpotter, but twenty-seven guns are off our streets, a thousand rounds of uh evidence to be looked at, and forty-five arrests, nineteen victims. So, you know, I'm kind of like Councilmember Thompson. I don't know if you can ever put a price tag on, on one of these victims. I can guarantee if you ask them about it, if, you know, and I know your, your report was not to make an assessment about the value of it. You were just kind of gathering information for us. But it, it seems like a community is safer if twenty-seven, if it's twenty-seven less guns on the street, would you think?
And I think, I think in terms of focusing on where those benefits are the greatest, the best we can say is that it seems to be the sweet spot is these, these situations where there's both a nine-one-one call and the ShotSpotter alert. Those seems to be much more likely to be sort of alerts to real pressing incidents where when law enforcement gets there, there's, there's more that's found, there's more that's done.
You know, like a hammer and a nail is kind of, is what you're saying.
Um, but, and it seems like there's a less benefit when there's a ShotSpotter alert alone. And we don't know as much about what's happening when there's a nine-one-one alert alone. We just don't have the, the data. And so that, that's what makes it so hard for us to, to, to say something more definitive. We wish we could tell you more. We know that there's this sweet spot where the greatest benefits are when the nine-one-one call is accompanying the ShotSpotter. Maybe that's because it's the nine-one-one calls that are giving you the best information. And ShotSpotter isn't adding that much. Or, or maybe they're both adding something. And so you're really getting something out of both systems. And that's, that's what we can't answer and we wish we could.
And, and, and I know, yeah, and I, and I'm sure, sure data's kind of, uh, it depends on what you start with, right? But here are just a few communities that got rid of ShotSpotter uh recently. So, so Durham, a- and as you said before, you, you said you noticed that we were having an overall downtrend of our gun violence here. Couldn't say it was attributed to ShotSpotter, but you, you did acknowledge that at some point in the conversation that the entire city was seeing a, a decrease, right? Did you acknowledge that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, since two thousand and one or so.
Yeah. So I'm, so I'm looking at, I'm looking at Durham. Council voted in uh May fifth twenty-four uh to discontinue it, but the number of people shot after that vote was forty-three point eight percent increase. Deadly shootings up sixteen percent, non-fatal up fifty percent. Then Dayton, Ohio, another community that did the same in uh October twenty-twenty-two, homicides rose forty-four to forty-four, uh, which is a forty-seven percent uptick. And local reporting uh crimes involving guns were up in every category uh that same year. And then Charlotte in twenty-sixteen kind of went through this and um the next year, twenty-seventeen, firearms and homicides increased uh as well as non-fatal gunshots from um and, well, non-fatal gunshots fell while fatal gunshots and, and uh, and homicides went, went up. Uh, those following years and um, so is it fair to say that it's hard to say what a community is doing or not uh based on, you have kind of mixed results that the if, the efficacy of, of, of one without the other, you can't really pinpoint according to you, what you put in this report. But you can't really say that it's not working because we experienced the decrease and other communities experienced the increase that got rid of it. How would you, how would you assess that as a researcher?
Well, I'm looking at Durham Police Department shooting data. It's gone down steadily actually in the last few years. Uh, but uh, but no, th- those are not the kinds of causal claims you can make based on um based on the data that we have. Um, and uh, and, and there are actually other really important things that you need to look at uh if you want to know whether what's being done to address shootings is producing good results.
I agree with that.
Like, what are, like, what are, like, like, what are the clearance rates? Uh, you know, there's, there was important work that uh one of our Duke graduates was doing, I think in Denver, just looking at, you know, where homicide detectives assigned to non-fatal shootings, the, the non-fatal shooting clearance rate was really low, had no- nothing to do with how quickly do officers arrive on the scene or what happens in the initial stages of, of an investigation. But there are awful lot of important cases that aren't closed because resources aren't allocated once there isn't.
No doubt about it. I think that.
So anyway, but that's, you know, there, there are lots of challenges. And uh, and obviously we're only looking at this, this super preliminary step.
Right.
But uh, and I, and I'm sure you have others who are looking at, you know, how, how are these cases closed? And what, and what are the resources to, to investigate homicides? And there are lots of different measures you'd want to take.
Uh, thank.
So, um, but yeah, these, but these, these, these trends uh um are, are very hard to associate, especially when you have, you know, systems like ShotSpotter only piloted and, you know, portions of a city, particular communities, it's hard to, it, it's hard to do good, good before and after evaluations.
Gotcha. Thanks, sir. Uh, Councilmember Davidson and Banks-McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'll just share my two cents. Um, I think that when we talk about ShotSpotter and we talk about other programs, we can't treat public safety as like OCS is going to fix everything, right? OCS is just another layer in our public safety to address some of the issues and concerns. And that's how I feel about ShotSpotter. Um, and I, I'm a firm believer that data can be manipulated. I'm not accusing anybody of manipulating any data that's presented today. But I do believe that it has, it can be manipulated. Um, what I will say is that every time I go to my district who has it, which is the Massey Hill District, they talk about it. I ask them about it throughout the year, not just when this time comes, but I ask them about it throughout the year. And as Councilmember Thompson said, a life worth saving is a life worth uh paying for. And so um, I will, I do support ShotSpotter. I'm, it's no secret, and I will continue to support it as long as the community is asking for it. Um, but I, I don't want us to get into that ShotSpotter is just like, we take it out of the, 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 the area and we put a program there. This ShotSpotter is not just about the, the youth. It's about public safety at large. So when we talk about taking ShotSpotter out of an area and putting programs, yes, let's put programs, but let's keep ShotSpotter because public safety is not just a one fix-all. It's, you have to have different layers to make the whole cake taste good. So um, that's just my two cents, and I will continue to uh support the ShotSpotter.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you guys for the presentation. Um, as mentioned, I do also support the ShotSpotter. Um, I think that it'll be, it's definitely beneficial to our community. Um, if it's used by our U.S. Army, our Marines, the NATO forces, they have similar gunfire detection. So if they're using that, that's showing that it's a benefit for the military. So again, if it's a, if it's a benefit for our military, it should be beneficial to our community. Um, another thing I also want to mention too, I've had a conversation with our chief. And from our conversation, he seems to be supportive of it, um, mentioning that that's also a tool to help our community. Um, so I would love to uh further discuss ways to use technology such as drone, because we should talk about um, our police officers showing up at a faster uh pace. Um, just imagine what we can do if we have drones in place. So I think that's a further discussion to have with our chief. And again, even, you know, in some cases, it might be a false alarm, but I'd rather it be a false alarm knowing that our officers are there to help someone versus not being able to. And, and again, that's a way to collect evidence, is the evidence collection. So I think that our officers are using that as a, as a tool. So I'm also in support of this. Until again, I hear otherwise from our chief and our police department. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Benevente, and then go second round to Davis and here.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I've been to a conference where other acoustic technology has been implemented. Um, not sound thinking, not ShotSpotter. Um, and they were trying to be a little bit more thoughtful about the way that they advertise to cities. And one of the things that they, these other companies would do is tell law enforcement, do not put ShotSpotter into the officer's vehicles. Use it as a tool for the white shirts, the lieutenants, to do some like overarching sort of research on, on issues. But that there is actually massive harm when you sort of send officers into a situation, sort of you sending them in hot, that you are indicating to them that live gunfire is occurring, that they're going into a kind of uh active shooter situation. And that when they interact with people who, again, when there are ultimately no evidence found of any sort of gunfire or any sort of issues, um, we know that this happens here in Fayetteville because we lost someone's life, actually, the first day that we turned on ShotSpotter. Uh, Lawrence Artist, as of today, there's no evidence to suggest that he himself alerted the loud noise detector. But he interacted with law enforcement and ultimately died. And so when other councilmembers want to talk about lives saved, they're not accounting for Lawrence Artist's life lost in this calculation. Um, so could you speak to, um, you hear the constant refrains from my colleagues that um, they're fine with the wild goose chases because it creates more interactions between the people and law enforcement. Um, but I want maybe you guys to give some insight, because you guys have done research not just in Fayetteville, but in other cities, about this concept of kind of coming in hot and whether or not that is actually um, not the best way and can potentially create some other harms. Uh, is there any sort of insight you can give on that front?
That isn't something, when we don't have information on other, other things that happened at these scenes, whether civilians were injured or anything else, um, it's, it is definitely a topic that jurisdictions have taken into account when they've uh structured protocols for use of ShotSpotter. And so some agencies do have policies uh about how to approach those alerts and also what kind of arrests can be made. Can non-firearms-related arrests be made, that kind of thing? Um, but uh, but it's not something we were able to, to study here.
Okay, because I think, you know, we talk about the dashboard as well, and we advertise, you know, how many arrests that we've made, but we're never really clear about how many of those were firearms-related. Um, and so if manipulation of data is occurring, like Councilmember Davis has said, I think that the real evidence that we have of that is really coming from the city side in trying to make this program seem more productive than it truly is as it relates to gun violence, which was what, you know, this was intended to do. And I guess my last question for y'all um has to do with um, you know, so- something that you've mentioned that response time, um, that the way that it's really being accounted for is the difference between a dispatcher actually communicating potentially to an officer before they depart that, you know, that there is actually maybe some, you know, um, additional detail that is really counting for that thirty seconds. Um, and, and so, you know, I, I'd want some more uh, you know, recommendation as it relates to, again, how we maybe effectively uh do this. Um, and, you know, I guess another noteworthy uh response that you had to um some of the other questions that came up is that, you know, nine-one-one um isn't advertising that they're going to be this accurate. And, and I'm, and I'm trying to sort of resolve, and, and, and perhaps City Manager, this is a time for Chief Brian to come up, because I think some councilmembers were speaking for him. I'd probably want to hear from him himself uh about whether um, a technology that claims to provide ninety-nine percent accuracy when we're only getting a quarter of that on its own is really the best use of these dollars where, you know, ARPA is not covering the bill anymore. This is going to come out of our general fund. You know, is there actually um, programs that are policies um, or technologies that have actual um, data to, to drive them uh as being productive? Um, because that's the difference between OCS and some of these other programs is that they have a proven track record of success. And I think there's some other programs or policies that the police would like to invest this money in that have good track records of success. Um, I just don't know why we're sort of willing to um go down this cliff with ShotSpotter um, if there's better ways of spending that money um that do the same thing or do it more effectively. So I think the first part of the question was for the staff or, or for, for the, for the good attorney and good doctor. And then the second part of the question was for um Chief Brian.
Well, uh, Councilman Benevente, let them answer that. We'll, we'll, I've got the other councilmembers and then I'll see, uh, go to the manager about Chief Bryant. But you've got some other uh councilmembers that are on site looking to have some input before we do that. Um, uh, Attorney Garrett, uh, were, was there any response?
I wasn't sure what, wh- what was the park directed to us? Was it just the question, like, could there be other costs and benefits? Or I, I wasn't, I wasn't sure.
I, I'm not sure either, but.
Yeah, yeah. Well, no, I'll, I'll be glad to clarify. I, I, again, because.
Within the scope of their work, uh, because, you know, we don't, we don't want to bring him into something that's outside of the scope of this work right here.
Well, that, that's why I thought about you bringing up Durham and Charlotte and these other cities that are, you know, you were looking at data that was citywide and not specific to their ShotSpotter zones to try and make a point. So I would agree, let's keep it focused. Um, but, but, but Attorney Garrett, if, if you could just share with us again, I'm trying to um get some helpful hints here, because I think you heard from my colleagues, no matter what the data says, they're going down with this ship. So I'm trying to sort of eke out a little bit of a silver lining here of, can we do it a little bit more intelligently, a little bit more sophisticatedly with the way that we are deploying this technology?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that, that we, that we definitely uh spoke to and thought that, I mean, certainly so we couldn't, and it, and it, it's all costs and benefits, but if it's worth the cost to collect more information, for example, about the nine-one-one calls, it might help you identify ways to prioritize those and, and see what value you're getting out of the, the nine-one-one system. Uh, similarly, you could collect more information about what's happening with these ShotSpotter alerts to figure out which are the most valuable ones, which are the ones worth prioritizing. And uh, and right now, it seems like from what we know, but there, you know, these gaps in what we know, uh, from what we know, it's this, it's these situations where there is both the nine-one-one call and the ShotSpotter alert. Uh, and uh, and so tho- those seem like those could be readily be prioritized, because those are the, by far the most productive uh alerts that we see.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question for, I guess, staff, Mr. Manager. Where do we find this company that did this, this research for us? Where do we find them at?
I can just say, we're not a company, but uh, we're, we're academics. I, I, yeah, I, I think it's, it, I think some academics like me and Dr. Gellman.
We have our um, city, assistant city manager who's going to answer that for me. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, perfect.
The ask, um, when council approved the last contract was to replicate a study that was done, I believe, in Durham. And the Wilson Center was the specific group that did the same or similar study um in other cities. So we replicated that study by having the Wilson Center do that work.
Okay. Well, I would just share my disappointment in this presentation. There was no transparency in this presentation at all. Usually when there's a presentation given, I like to have pros and cons, but I was just given a whole bunch of cons that it did not work. We literally had to pull out what worked by asking questions, and I'm not sure um where, where they, where this presentation was made to do, but I'm not satisfied with this presentation. It was very um, it's not transparent enough to make a sound decision given just the cons of a situation and not giving any pros. That's just my two cents. Thank you, sir.
All right. Uh, Councilmember here.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mr. City Manager, help direct me on the direction to go uh so that I can make a request for us to continue uh the use of the Spatch, the ShotSpotter. I'm looking at the options here. And it says, receive the presentation and ask questions. So we, we've done that. Well, at least we've asked the questions.
So, Mr. Manager, what, what were you seeking out of this conversation?
What were you, yes.
We found ourselves here last year. This was council's request for information. The motion that council made was six to four directing us to do a study. And we had less than one year to do it. One of the reasons that we held a small group sessions with council, the reason we got a hum in the mic is because it's turned up so loud at the moment. So we, we'll fix that. With less than a year, we replicated the study that was done in Durham. Given the complexity of this issue and given the sensitivity of it as well locally on the ground, including some of the incidents that you've heard referenced where someone was shot. I think it was in Massey Hill and there was no 911 call, but police were able to respond as well as the unfortunate incidents when we turned on ShotSpotter. Staff knew this would be an issue and we advised you of that, that this would be coming back to you in September at your request. When we look at the report that was provided to you, it is based off of the analysis that was done largely in Durham. And we allocated about an hour, hour and a half for small group sessions with council two weeks ago. And the report does go into a lot greater detail. One of the things that the consultant and staff tried to do was just to present the data based on the metrics that were being measured, the metrics that were being discussed. I don't know that we would have been able to provide adequate pros and cons that would have satisfied the diverse group and opinions which are here. But what we're looking for today is number one, to have honored council's request, which was to do a study based off of the one that was in Durham to provide you with the data. The other is that when you made the motion last year, it was for continuation of a one-year contract. That contract is up in September. If council is interested in continuing the contract or discontinuing the contract, you could, through consensus, give us that and it would either be on your work, on your upcoming meeting for you to renew the contract, one year or three years. I think those are the options. Or if council decided, would say to take no action and, and didn't give us direction to discontinue the contract, then technically it could go into a month-to-month era. But being responsive to council's direction, which was to bring this back to you with the report in September for that is why it's in front of you now. We had hoped that the longer small group settings we had would have provided an opportunity for more in-depth analysis of the report. And that was what we were hoping for, for you to give us some direction this evening so that we would know where to put it on an agenda or not in an upcoming session.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Councilman Banks-McLaughlin has her question, if you, if you don't. Before you make any action, let me, let me make sure we caught all the questions. Councilman Banks-McLaughlin, Hondros. Oh, okay. All right, I'll come back to you. Councilman Hondros and then Green and Mayor Proton and Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The consultant mentioned the additional, or not additional, he, he mentioned the, I think you mentioned it too, Mr. Mayor, the trending downward since '21 or '22 of overall gun violence in the city. My question to the manager or staff is, weren't we also waiting on, or whoever can answer, weren't we waiting on additional information, I think from UNC Charlotte on a study?
A separate study that council had also directed was to look at the cost of gun violence in the city of Fayetteville. We previewed that with you as well in small group sessions. And that report will be finalized for you in November or December. And what they were waiting on was they needed to fully parse out a variety of things. But one was, from memory, was the cost of suicides as it relates to the cost of gun violence overall in the city of Fayetteville.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. One of my reservations or concerns or what I hear from our residents regarding this specific technology is the efficacy. There are several others. But I guess for me, until we get that additional data, I think it's all gun violence, I, I would be able to support this going month-to-month or whatever, if that's an option, until we get that additional data in November or December. Based on what I'm reading in the agenda packet, if, if, if I'm reading this correctly, there's two asks, one to accept the report and then direction on the sound thinking technology. So I could support accepting the report and then waiting for that additional info before we move forward on sound thinking technology. Thanks.
And Councilman Hondros, Councilmember Green.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the things that I distinctly remember, because I know who I am and I'll own it most of the time, I asked specifically about having this ShotSpotter discussion around the budget cycles, if at all possible, when and if we needed to do that, because the ARPA funds are gone. Somebody correct me if that's not true. The ARPA funds are no longer there to pay for this. So now this is the first time we are looking at having to decide where this money comes from. So that was one of my concerns and that was why I wanted to do it one year rather than two and/or three as we were presented. So that's the first piece. And then along with those questions, I, I still have that concern that we're financially, where does it come from? If we voted right this minute to approve it, we don't know where we're coming, it's coming from. And I agree with Councilmember Thompson's, there is no value we can place on someone's life. I've lost a child. I can say that. There is no value that we can place on someone's life, particularly our young people. With that being said, we do have to be fiscally responsible. So if we are going to continue the program, then we need to know at the time before we approve it, in my opinion, where the money is coming from.
Yes, ma'am. So apologies for it not being a budgeted, the report simply wasn't ready. The cost of gun violence study, and there's also an additional item in the cost of gun violence study that council requested, which is looking at the qualitative data such as how do people feel? How do they, and that was where we were using the people from the Prove Project and the participants there to actually sit down with them and have them go through a series of questions with our partner, Kevin Brooks. So that is also coming to you in December. But the data wasn't ready in time for budget. What was ready in time for budget, though, was council's direction that we approved, I think, an additional several hundred thousand dollars for other technology. And council also said that at the time we were hiring the police chief, who was not on board at the time of, during the budget session, that we would come back and if there was something that the police chief felt that he, or she needed, I guess at that time, we, we didn't know who it was going to be, we now know it's our favorite, Chief Brian, that council and, and manager would make available whatever resources they needed. So armed with that, I feel very comfortable that whatever council's direction is, that we'll be able to find either $220,000 for one year, month-to-month, or as Sound Design is proposing, either a one-year or three-year contract. But it was not ready, the data wasn't ready, so we couldn't provide it to you at the budget time. But council's direction was clear. We would, we do have additional funds that we may have to shuffle some of the priorities about cameras, which not all of those can be put in in one year as well, all the money we set aside for that. So I'm not, I feel very comfortable that we would be able to find the money within the budget. But if it is general fund, it would not be ARPA.
Right. So I guess that that's part of my concern is we do have a new chief. And I think at this point, based on what you said, and thank you for that information, I do remember that. But I would like to know if that's how the chief wants his $200,000 spent. If, and I understand it's $210,000 now, but.
Well, that's if the council says it's one year.
Right. I, I understand. But, but what I'm saying is we, we haven't heard in a formal environment, and I don't want to put him on the spot. But we haven't heard in a formal environment what his thoughts are on ShotSpotter. We heard a lot from Chief Brayden. We have not heard from Chief Brian.
All right. Councilman Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a one simple question for the presenters. They were talking about accuracy. What is more accurate, a 911 call or a ShotSpotter alert when it comes to gunfire?
That we can't answer with the Fayetteville data because we don't have the kind of confirmation information for the, for the 911 calls, except if there was a ShotSpotter alert too.
Only in combination, incorrect?
Yeah, basically, that, that additional information is gathered following the ShotSpotter protocol. But there isn't like a protocol like that for response to other firearms-related incidents generated through 911 calls.
Thank you, sir.
And there's no, no information about whether it was a false alarm or false positive or not for either. So we can't definitively speak to the, the complete accuracy of either 911 calls or ShotSpotter alerts.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have a few questions. And I want to go back to when we had this conversation a year ago, that we were here, six-four vote, one-year contract or three-year contract. And as I recall, it was $200,000 a year if we signed the $300 contract. Is that correct? I don't, who am I asking? Who would have this information?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, Proton. In the original contract, there was three years and it would have been 200K per year.
Okay. So what are we looking at now?
The, the new contract has the same structure, a one-year at 220 and a three-year at, I believe it goes down to 210 for the three, it'd be like 630 or 640.
Okay. So a year ago, if we would have done three hun- three years, it would have been at 200 a year. So we didn't do that. So we paid 220 this time or 210 this time?
The last payment was for 210,000.
So we paid 210,000. Then my next question is, how much did we pay the, the group that did the survey or did the study for us? How much have we paid the people that are online with us today? And UNCC?
So respectively, they were 100K and 90K each.
Okay. So that's our 200,000. So so what I will say is my position has not changed. We sat here a year ago, it would have been $200,000 a year. Now we paid 210. We've paid 190 in consultants. I'm very interested. I know that we did get part of the cost of gun violence and I am very interested in that and the little pieces that we did get. It is, I'm, it is something that we really need to peel the onion back on. It, it's going to be, I believe it's really going to be great. So we have said, and if you do Google and you see things that are happening and that people that did have it and things that have changed. And the one that hit me when I was Googling was the Charlotte that went up 20. It was the highest crime rate in 25 years after they stopped it. So with that being said, I, like I said, my position has not been changed. And if we do the three-year contract, is it the 210 or is it the 200?
I, I need to correct those values. It is 220,500 per year for a three-year contract for a total of 661,500.
661?
Yes.
Okay. So, so we'll add another 61,000 on to basically what we've spent if we would have done the 300. So we're down to, and we paid an extra 10. So it was 261,000.
Not what we paid. That's the current quote for the next term.
Is that for one year or three years?
They are at 220,500 per year. And on the three-year term, it comes to 661,500.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
So no discount for the going three years versus one year?
It does not, it does not show a discounted rate on this, Mayor.
All right. Go back to Councilmember here.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Mayor Proton. That brings up some, some thoughts in my, in my mind. Three-year contract is 600,000 plus. Year-to-year contract is 220,000 per year, correct? That brings us up to the 600,000 plus for the three years. And the, which I was aware of, but the AARP funding has expired or is now gone. I'm thinking seniors, I'm, I'm thinking senior citizens. But the offer, the offer funding has now expired on us. So we can't go back there anymore. So council, this is what, what I would like for us to consider. And I know it's going to probably be up for further discussion. I would still just like to go back with us doing the, because there's no discount for the three, correct? And there's a possibility, we don't know, Mr. City Manager, help me, that there possibly could be some funding next year somewhere, possible, okay? Then I would just like to move that we continue the ShotSpotter for an additional year. And well, that's, accept the report and extend the ShotSpotter for additional year. But this is open for discussion.
I'm sorry. Is that a second?
No, I had a question for staff.
Can I get a second on that? You got a second? Banks-McLaughlin, okay. Councilmember Hondros?
Based on the previous, I just want to make the clarification, I want to ask staff if my memory is correct. Based on the three-year proposal from last year, it wasn't a set 200 or 210 per year. There was a 5% annual increase in there. So the, they're not doing us any favors on a multi-year. It's the same price, just like the three-year deal this time is the 20, 221,500 or whatever works out to you. But I, I would like to ask Chief Brian a question, if I may, regarding this technology.
Come on up, Chief.
Is that okay?
Because I'm really trying, I mean, I agree with a lot of my colleagues. I agree with Councilman Davis. I mean, all of our residents, all of us believe in public safety is our number one priority. And whether it's a placebo effect or not, all of our residents deserve to feel safe. If this is something that helps them feel safe, you know, I, I'm trying to be as supportive as I can. Chief Brian, my question to you is, to my colleagues that are questioning the, the funding source with the ARPA dollars drying up or expiring. And I get that this is a tool in your, your toolbox and your department's toolbox and you'll take all the tools you can get. So I appreciate that. My question to you is, if council said to you, Police Chief Brian, would you like this tool, yes or no? And we'll fund it from the general fund, my best guess is you're going to say sure.
Yes, sir.
Okay. If council said, Chief Brian, would you like this tool? But hey, we don't have ARPA dollars. It's coming out of your budget. Would you say yes or no?
It would depend on what, what other cuts we would have to make in adjustment in the department.
And then if council said, let's just use 220,000 as a round number. If council said today or in the future, Chief Brian, would you like this one-year subscription to this tool for 220K? Or we will give you 220K on top of your budget to use for whatever technology, tools or whatever that you deem appropriate. Would you choose this technology or some other technology?
Currently, just based on what I know, I would say we would utilize the funding on this technology until we have something else that we can rely on.
So, because I know in the past, the department was talking about drone programs. I think they might have been mentioned today. So in, in lieu of getting drones to help fight crime or help catch criminals in the act or right after, you think this, this technology would be more beneficial?
I, I would say this is, is a combination of, of the tools that we would have in order. I would say this is a combination of the tools that we would have in order to meet the mission, what we're trying to do in terms of, you know, solving crime or detecting crime. So I would say, you know, this particular technology can help us in terms of when we get to a scene, we're able to actually narrow to a location versus just going to a general area.
Sure.
So that's the difference in terms of what it brings to the table. And if you notice, when we're talking about the response time with the 911 calls, that's because officers know that that technology is actually directing you to a corner or a cross street versus you just going to a general area, a neighborhood. So now you have a little bit more direction in terms of where you need to go to. So I said, again-
The triangulation.
Yes, sir.
And I appreciate that. My, I don't have any other question for you, Chief. I don't know if any of my colleagues do. My plea really is just for my colleagues. I'm not there, and I'm trying to get there. I don't know. I think if we got the additional information in November, December from the other study, in addition to giving staff that time to get the funding nailed down, I'm just trying to get there, and I don't know that I could support it today. If you wanted to separate the motion, I can support receiving the report. But I'm good with going month-to-month until we get that other data and then looking at this, but I wouldn't be able to support it today. But thank you for consideration.
So I have-
Mr. Mayor, a question as well, that you said that I could direct to the chief when it was his turn, so just let me know when the best time is.
Sure. So are you on the phone, Mr. Mayor? Okay. So, did you want to speak, Mr. Mayor, too?
Councilmember Benevente.
Okay. Well, I was. I just didn't know if you wanted a question, too. Councilmember Benevente?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. Chief Brian, are you still at the mic?
Yes, sir.
So, when I asked you the question during the quarterly report about the 250 alerts that you had shown, it did not separate which ones were 911-affiliated or if they were ShotSpotter alone. But having heard the presentation today, are you still instructing law enforcement to assume that a ShotSpotter-only alert is definitely gunfire, that when they respond to that call, they're expected to assume that gunfire is taking place, or does that 24% efficacy inform you now to instruct your officers to take a different approach in the way they are deployed?
So the way that the officers are deployed are based on the sensors, and I want to make sure that we're not mixing what we're talking about. In terms of the sensors, are the sensors is giving you the actual data that is gunfire. I don't, and I think we're losing that.
Sir, you're saying that if an alert says that loud noise occurred at this location 100% of the time, you are going to assume that gunfire occurred?
No. What the data says is that it shows that it's 97% accuracy that it is gunfire.
So therefore, you're saying that if a loud noise is detected by ShotSpotter, you are going to continue, even after this independent evaluation says it's not in fact 97%, that it's much closer to actually 24%? You are going to continue to instruct your officers to assume that 97% likelihood that you're about to enter a zone or into a situation where gunfire has occurred?
They are responding to the ShotSpotter alert as in the accuracy of that particular device is identifying it as gunfire. So then when they get there to that particular scene, they will use their judgment in terms of what they see there and act accordingly.
So regardless of the information that has been presented today, and Attorney Garrett, Dr. Gettleman, if you want to hop in, because I see that maybe Mayor Colvin is confused as well, please help us reconcile this, because to me, you guys have unveiled a very different understanding and potentially some good advice to take a different approach to how we respond to something that claims to be 97% accurate for gunfire when the follow-up, the follow-through, any actual evidence is saying differently.
Okay, Councilmember Benevente, are you good?
No, not at all. I have not heard a response from anybody.
Not a response?
Not from Mayor Colvin, because you have no idea what you're talking about.
So Councilmember Benevente, let's be respectful. Let's be respectful.
He's kind of stepping in when I've asked a question to, I named specifically Attorney Garrett Garnett, Dr. Gettleman. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Benevente. Attorney Garrett?
Yeah, like we've described, it does, it is hard to say that most of these alerts are confirmed in some way once police come. Whether that means that they were in fact false alerts or not, can't say. But we do suggest that there are multiple ways that you could get better data and better focus responses or better prioritize responses. But that's obviously, that's a policing decision. We just note those options in our report. But in terms of what's collected now, yeah, the bulk of the alerts are not later confirmed.
Thank you, Attorney.
And I think just to clarify, the number that was said and put in the chat, the 24%, that's not necessarily if evidence was recovered. That was through multiple different sources. So if different types of evidence were covered, if victims were identified, if an arrest was made, if a witness was located, if there was an offense number made, et cetera, all the different types of evidence, of information that went into that are listed in the report. But basically, we can at most confirm that up, we can at most say that up to 24% of the ShotSpotter-only alerts were confirmed. So it was about confirmation, not evidence specifically.
So Chief Brian, having heard, so Chief Brian, having heard that clarification, are you going to do anything differently, having gotten this report, in instructing your officers to take a different approach? Is that something you're going to talk with your lieutenants about, hey, we learned something about what this technology can and can't do? Are you going to do anything differently moving forward from today?
Sir, what I will instruct our officers is to respond to a call versus if it's 911, they're going to respond the same way. If they don't have any additional information on a 911 call, they're still going to respond to that call in the same way. If we have a call in combination with 911 and ShotSpotter, that's a better indication that you may have information from the 911 caller that's giving you additional information that that particular incident has a suspect or something, so therefore you're going to respond. If it's a ShotSpotter call, you're still going to respond to that call in a manner and then determine whether or not the, there's a specific person or subject that may bring you to attention or reasonable suspicion to approach. So what I would say is, no, I will not change our direction in telling our officers how to respond to a call.
Thank you, Chief.
So nothing about this report.
So, Councilmember Benevente, we're going to move on to go to-
This is actually the last question, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. It's still my time. It's my duty to do it. So, Chief Brian, are you saying that you're, no, nothing about this report is changing anything about your approach?
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, I'm calling it the question. The chief has already answered that question. I'll call for a question, please.
All right.
And I'll just ask for a discussion in that case.
He called for the question.
That's not how that works. Yep, vote.
I can ask for discussion on that motion to call for the question, and if-
You've called for the vote, so let's make the vote.
So let's make the vote.
No, that's not how that works, Mr. Mayor. And Madam Attorney, if that is the motion that is called for the question-
Councilmember Benevente, we've heard enough, okay? The vote has been called, and we are going to do the vote. Can you turn the mic, turn it?
There is discussion on the motion-
So, Councilmember Benevente?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
There is question.
We would like for you to be part of the vote. You have been gavelled. They have called for the vote. So please show respect.
It's not about, the respect is for the Roberts Rules of Orders that govern our meeting. So can Madam Attorney clarify whether a call for the question allows for discussion?
Sir, there's no discussion on the question.
Oops. To repeat the motion, the motion was to renew the contract for a year and to accept the report, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, which was second by?
Seconded by Banks-McLaughlin. Okay, I would like everybody to put their vote in the machine, and I will call the mayor and Benevente. Councilmember Benevente?
Red.
Okay, I'd have, let's see. Somebody hasn't, who hasn't voted, other than me? Maria's voted, the mayor's voted. Everybody voted? I know, I'd want to, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, that is nine to one. Let's move on. Nine to two, I'm sorry. Eight to two. All right. Now we are at five o'clock, and we are on number four. Thank you, Mr. Colley. Welcome. So, Council, these are just updates. If we want to go through, and if you have any questions, just let us know. Thank you.
Yeah, this should be pretty brief. It's nothing but good news. So HUD changed some walls earlier this year, and they impacted how we designed our down payment assistance program that we've had branded Home Buying Hero. Typically, with the down payment assistance, the homebuyer is required to stay in the home as their principal residence for five, 10, 15 years, depending on the amount. The dollar thresholds that trigger each one of those amounts has been adjusted upwards. And so I'll show you exactly what that means here. So the previous rule said that if we assisted someone less than $15,000, they had a five-year threshold. Between 15 and 40, it was 10 years. More than 40 was 15. And so all that has slid to the right just a little bit, so that now if it's less than $25,000 in down payment assistance, it's five years. Less than 50, it's 10, and then above 50 is 15. So what this means is that some homebuyers now can have shorter affordability periods. That's where the city is involved in ensuring that they have that as their principal residence for a certain amount of time. This gives them greater flexibility to refinance, to sell, move, things like that during that period. Now, it has some pros and cons to staff, right? This is less monitoring than our staff will have to do over a longer term. But the con is that it could slightly reduce those repayments that we get if somebody were to sell during that five, 10, 15-year period. We don't predict that to be a large margin. We did not design this program as a primary way to produce program income. And so we're recommending that Council kind of give us consensus direction to align the HERO program with the updated thresholds. We'll maintain full compliance with all of our regulatory stuff. It'll support homebuyers that have a shorter affordability period, and it'll improve the program. So right now, we're just looking to receive this information and then just get a general consensus from Council. We don't need Council's directive or you to vote for us to make this change. We can do it administratively. But we did want to bring this good news forward, and we'd like to amend the program if Council is amenable.
Okay, is, do you have discussion?
Question.
Okay, I will go to Hare. Did you have a question?
Motion.
Okay, Honduras beat you to it. So you can, and then, okay, so I'll get it.
Thank you, Madam Pro Tem.
Councilmember Thompson?
Mr. Colley, or Alex, or Ms. McCarthy, somebody. The last time we had this briefing, we were talking about money that wasn't being spent. And then we changed the program and gave it to county officials and school teachers and everybody else. I think you guys did community outreach, and now the numbers are astronomical. Do we still have money in the bank, or do we need to put more money into the bank so they can use it for more people that want to apply for it?
So right now, we have funding. We will be coming back later on this year to talk about affordable housing in general and talking about the $12 million bond.
Right.
And so some of that money could be put towards enhancing this effort as well.
So we can use money out of the general obligation bond that we passed in 2022 for this program?
Yes, sir.
Outstanding. That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you, sir.
All right, Councilmember Honduras?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. I move that we receive the updated information and come in line with the HUD program.
Second.
Councilmember Hare, that's second, and I will call for, yes.
Question on the floor, though.
Okay.
Help me understand, because that was a good point that was brought up about the additional fund from the, you know, you all know how I feel about the general fund. So the funding that we have for the Home Buying Hero program, hasn't that been a part of our CBG funding from the federal government, which we don't see right now for the next term? The reason that we're saying any additional fund would be coming from the general fund?
So, you know, it's tough to make predictions on federal policy, not just the administration, but the legislator as well. Right now, we're not projecting that these grants go away. So this program is funded in a couple of different ways. So it's largely funded through our home investment partnership, which, like CDBG, is one of those HUD entitlements we get annually. We also had $1 million that the state legislator gave us for affordable housing, and so we use that for this program as well. And so that's been the two primary pots that we've been spending out of.
So, just for clarity, and probably maybe more for me than any, so the statement that my colleague just made for the additional funding as we move forward from our general fund, that's not necessarily where it's coming, is it?
So-
If I'm listening to what you just said.
No, I'm glad you asked this. So assuming that we continue getting home funds on an annual basis like we've been doing since 97, then we will set aside enough money for those that are 80% of area median income and below for this program. The folks that are from 80% to 120%, that more workforce target, we're using that $1 million from the state. And last year during the budget, we asked you to bring in my employee into the general fund, and so that would carve out more money for the state. So we did that. And that state money should last us the next year or so, before we have to look at what are we doing moving forward.
That's good. That's good. That's good. Okay, I'm ready to vote, Madam Mayor Pro Tem.
All right, let's vote.
We're voting on the sure system?
On the HERO system. Yes, we're betting on this.
Good to be back, sir.
Councilmember Benevente?
Saw you did.
Okay.
No, thank you, Council.
Thank you, Ms. Colley. All right, moving to next item, 6.05, Bicycle Lane Ordinance Clarification and Recommendations. This gentleman we need to see right here.
It's not yet? Okay. All right. Looks like I have some talking to do to my people. Okay. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Brian McGill. I'm the Assistant Public Services Director of Traffic Services. So this is part one of a two-part presentation I'm going to be providing to you guys. The first one is going to be about bicycle lane ordinance clarifications, recommendations.
Just one moment. Mr. City Manager, is it any way possible that we could just cut the refrigerator off just for a moment or two, so that we can kind of, because the air hasn't cut off since we've been in here?
Are you close, sir?
You said the refrigerator.
He said the refrigerator.
That's right, we killing all of it in, yeah, just, just a little bit, please, just.
Yeah, if someone could have, if council is amenable to adjust it.
My colleague's toes is frozen.
You know, I like it 77, so.
Ain't none of moving back there. Thank you, it went off, it first time since Monday. I hate to see this bill.
Thank you. So this is, uh, the first part of the presentation, uh, there's going to be a follow-up presentation directly after this one that's going to talk about, uh, no parking request inside of neighborhoods. So the initial request that brought, that bought, brought about this presentation is a request for clarifications on bicycle lane ordinances. Uh, there's sort of some vagueness in our ordinances about people parking in bicycle lanes and when it is and is not permitted and what constitutes a bicycle lane. From that, staff reviewed some ordinances across the state, mainly NCDOT, Greensboro and Charlotte. From there, we wanted to kind of boil this down into a very simple, uh, straightforward process. The bicycle lane that we can easily reference is on Langton Street, uh, that's whenever you have striping on the road and they will also have symbols and signs, uh, along the street as well. It's intended for bicyclists, parking, walking, jogging, pushing strollers. Essentially, anything that is not associated with a bicycle is not permitted in a bicycle lane. So a bicycle lane is strictly reserved for bicycle use. A multi-use lane is reserved for everything. It's essentially, it is everything except for driving in. Uh, you can ride a bicycle in, you can run and play in it, you can push strollers and go jogging and put trashcans out and park your vehicle inside of it. Uh, this one, you'll see stripes along the road, but you won't see any symbols, you won't see any signs for it, it'll just, it looks like a shoulder line going down the, the road inside of a neighborhood. And then multi-use paths, uh, the most prominent example that we'll find here in Fayetteville is going to be the Cape Fear River Trail, uh, that you can see here on the screen with some of the example images. Uh, this is intended for non-motorized uses, so bicycle rollerblading, uh, walking, jogging, pushing strollers, but you're not going to, you should not find ATV users or, uh, dirt bikes on it. What we are recommend, not recommending, what we are proposing is a handful of ordinances. And this was run by the legal team as well, uh, for their review as well. Uh, but this comes off of what we gleaned from Charlotte and Greensboro and NCDOT. And the first part is just an addition to 16 dash 263, and this basically says that people aren't going to be driving inside of a bicycle lane in an unsafe manner, whether that is while they're on a bicycle or on a vehicle of any nature. And I'm just, I'm kind of going through this quickly and if you guys want me to keep going? Okay. And then this one is going to be a new section inside of a code of ordinances, it specifically calls out parking inside of a bicycle lane. Uh, and it spec, uh, talks about when you can park in a bicycle lane or obstruct a bicycle lane and it essentially falls in line with when you can also obstruct crosswalks, sidewalks, intersections. And it's whenever you're leaving a driveway, uh, whenever you're crossing an intersection, whenever a police officer tells you that you need to be in there because they're having to get emergency vehicles through the area. Now, it isn't, uh, it isn't a presentation on bicycle lanes if we don't talk about the bike plan. Uh, the last time that the bike plan was updated was in 2020 and back then a little over 170 projects were recommended, specifically 171. While we say bike plan, it also talks about multi-use lanes as well. Fayetteville is sort of an oddity in that we are kind of the outlier that we might be the only one that has a multi-use lane in the state. Everybody else has bike lanes or they have sidewalks or they have shoulders, but they don't call out anything that is a multi-use lane. They have, uh, multi-use paths, things that go through the parks, off the road, but like a lane on the road for people to just kind of walk and jog in, they don't have that in Charlotte, they don't have that in Greensboro. It's either a bike lane or they have sidewalks. So Fayetteville's, uh, kind of breaking ground in that, that direction. Uh, for the current bicycle plan projects, uh, that we have recently accomplished, we have been using the GO bonds that have been allocated for these efforts. Uh, but in future fiscal years, we're going to be using, uh, the general fund for that. But from this, Coventry and McGilvary and McGray, those roads were recently resurfaced and with the resurfacing, they have also had pavement markings reapplied. And then, uh, the treatment that was suggested from the bicycle plan was applied to those roads, whether they're a multi-use or bicycle lane. Winslow Street is the only one where resurfacing, yeah, resurfacing is coming, it has not been completed yet. But whenever it is, that's whenever also, uh, the bicycle lane treatments are going to be coming in as well. And that is because essentially we don't want to pay for striping and then have somebody tear up the road just for us to go back and repay for striping again. Uh, now the future of the bicycle plan, uh, this fiscal year, and it's going to happen towards the end of the fiscal year, sometime in the spring of previous years or anything to go off of, we plan on coming back to council and saying, "Council, we need a little bit of money to go talk with NCDOT to have a pitch for updating our bicycle plan." It is now time for our bicycle plan to be updated based off of NCDOT's calendar and kind of the industry's standard of updating every five years. But until then, we're going to continue utilizing our 2020 bicycle plan. And if these are ordinances are adopted, while these 2020 bicycle plan projects are being put in, we're going to, uh, check them against the ordinances that we're suggesting today. And then, uh, as these things are being proposed or essentially recommended, then we are going to be bringing them to you as well. We bring them as a bicycle plan project adoption. But in the interest of kind of keeping everybody also informed about the more nuanced details of day-to-day activities of staff, whenever things are being planned or converted from a bike lane to multi-use lane or vice versa, or if one of those are being removed because a road's being resurfaced, something of that nature, then it'll, going forward, staff are going to be putting that on agenda, council, uh, council agendas to make council aware of those actions. And so with that, we are recommending that these ordinances be, uh, adopted for incorporation.
All right, thank you, sir, I did have a couple of questions, um, so, I see Mayor Protem has hers. Oh, no, all right.
I have mine.
So, you have, um, you, you said something that sparked my attention, can you go back to multi-use versus bicycle lanes on there? So, other places have sidewalks useful for walking, uh, stroller pushing, jogging, tho- those kind of things. And they don't have multi-use lanes, they have that bicycle lanes or sidewalks. You said we're unique with that, so we know we're behind on sidewalk installation as we're trying to play catch-up there. The, the problem I have is the lane that you have for someone to walk, bike, jog or push a stroller, we also allow cars to be parked in it, which is kind of counteractive to that. And there's no sidewalk there like the other examples you use of our peers. Why was that recommended to allow anything goes in that? Because if a car is there, you can't do it anyway.
So, on that front, uh, the next presentation is going to be a no parking presentation of how citizens, we're going to be recommending ideas on how to proceed with the process for citizens to request no parking in multi-use lanes. But for the initial approach, I can't speak to-
Well, I don't want to, I want to make that, and I'm, I'll, I'll wait to get there for that, but you're proposing them do this as a per request, like a speed bump request, right?
To a point, yes, it will be, yes.
Versus a policy decision?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, um, but speaking back to your answer, uh, your question, uh, I can't speak to the original response about why it was allowed in the first place, however, um, the, the two natural thoughts stemming from, just thinking out loud here, these are primarily kept to residential neighborhoods, so to restrict parking inside of, or in front of people's houses as a default is sort of running into a landmine, so to speak, because of the amount of multi-use lanes that are across the city. And then the second part is essentially for us to install sidewalk in these neighborhoods in place of the multi-use lines, it would be cost prohibitive.
Doing what?
Multi-use lane, uh, to install sidewalk instead of multi-use lanes in these neighborhoods, we would have to install curb and gutter, we would have to, uh, have land purchased or encroachments or easements, we would have to pay for the sidewalk itself, the construction would be, is a very costly endeavor.
Yeah, all right, and the last thing I have, on our bike lanes, um, I was in, uh, Wake County a couple of days ago, their bike lanes are actually on highways, uh, or not highways, but, but corridors that, that move you about the city. Most of ours I share within neighborhoods, how is someone supposed to bike that wants to drive, come to work? They have to come outside their neighborhood, but there's no designated connectivity between here and there. Why are the recommendations on these first installations using the bond funds within neighborhoods?
So, the bicycle plan is incorporating both bike lanes and multi-use lanes. And with that, staff are now approaching with an internal policy to not have bike lanes inside of neighborhoods, but only keep them on collectors and corridors, thoroughfares, things, things of that nature to not only match in line with other municipalities, but just kind of, I don't want to say common sense, but it just, it makes sense. Because again, it goes to not being able to park in front of people's houses if your bike lane is in front of a house. That said, why are bike lanes not on roads like Rayford Road or, or Village or things of that nature? That is because we haven't gotten to that stage yet. The bicycle plan is still in its infancy, I feel. I don't have the entire history of every bicycle lane that has ever been done in the city. But I do plan on coming back to council later this fiscal year and saying, "It's time to update the bicycle plan" and whenever we're going through the bicycle plan in the future, that's whenever I'm going to say, "We're going to do bicycle lanes on thoroughfares, collector roads, corridors, so that people can travel from their neighborhood to the place of work, but we're not going to bring it to the interior side of their neighborhoods."
All right, thank you, uh, Councilmember Thompson and Honduras and Benavente.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just have one question, how come we didn't think about these multi-use lanes during repaving of the southwest part of Fayetteville?
That would be a question I am not capable of answering at this time, but I can get an answer for you in the future.
Thank you, sir.
I will make note of that.
Councilman Honduras?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the code of ordinance amendments and place them on the consent agenda for adoption.
All right, uh, is there a second to that, because I think, all right, second by Davis, all right, Councilmember Benavente, um, discussion or comment?
Yeah, I had a question, um, so, to the presenter, um, you know, this question is one that, when I brought this to a council member request that has gotten us to this point, and I've kind of been updating, um, the community watch on this, the question that I get confronted with that, you know, I feel like I have an answer to, but just would appreciate just maybe some reemphasis here. The question is ultimately, we understand that, from the community, is that they understand the difference between what is multi-use and the pros and the cons to that, what is considered a pure bike lane and the pros and the cons to that. Um, and their next question is, well, why can there not be a third, um, option that does everything that they want, um, with all the good things and, and none of the drawbacks? What is the response there?
That, I'm not aware of the, uh, a current concept, that would be something that Fayetteville would essentially have to create from scratch to be able to create that, but it'll also have to be something that not only we would have to identify from what the neighborhood would consider to be, uh, what all the positives were and what all the drawbacks were, but also to have consensus across every neighborhood, across the city, to determine what all drawbacks were and then identify what would be able to kind of be the panacea to it all. And that, I'm not certain if we have, if we, if the industry has that tool in the toolbox.
I, I think, I think that's a good point about it having to apply everywhere all the time. But now, as far, and, and again, this is me trying to combine multiple things, you know, you were saying in the next presentation, we're talking about sort of a citizen-led initiative to sort of make the request for, uh, potentially no parking, but couldn't the, the citizen-led request be for this third option? Where, you know, I mean, I guess, I guess I he- I hear your point, but I, I feel like it still doesn't answer my question when it comes to what could be possible for us to develop. So, you know, to this, to the person who made the motion to accept this report, you know, if there's an opportunity for a friendly amendment or if there's a second motion that needs to be made, you know, if there's the interest of council to consider what a third option would look like or what the process would be of beginning to develop a third option, you know, that, that's, that's the interest of, um, the community from, that, that first initiated this, this council member request. And then my last question, um, a- aside from that, um, I've seen in certain neighborhoods in other communities, different ways that they kind of show that this is a multi-use lane, that instead of just simply the painted line, they'll sort of have raised, um, they kind of look like reflectors, but they're not reflective, but they're just sort of like little nodules, um, that kind of distinguish, you know, one side from the other. And I'm not saying that that would necessarily prohibit a car from still parking there, but, you know, even if it's just sort of, um, a way to indicate that, you know, in a given neighborhood there is sort of a pathway towards, um, an established bike lane through a multi-use lane, but that there is some kind of, um, way to, to kind of distinguish it in, in some ways that don't require an ordinance change, but can just be sort of cosmetic. Uh, is there any precedent for that or in what ways do neighborhoods sometimes get those kinds of, um, raised nodules to kind of separate a lane?
There, there are precedent for that in other municipalities, however, it's not applicable to multi-use lanes, it's applicable to bike lanes. Uh, in other municipalities, I believe it might be Chapel Hill, don't quote me on that, uh, they have green bicycle lanes to denote that it is a special bicycle lane. And essentially coloring the pavement itself would be denoting it as a separate entity, to be kind of like the special use. Um, and, and so that's something that I'm investigating, but I can't promise at this stage. And that is something that I would actually be wanting to bring forward, uh, with future bicycle plan implementations is green bicycle lanes just to help denote bike lane versus multi-use lane, because a multi-use lane inside of a neighborhood, we have miles and miles of it. I think last time that we added it all up, it was 70 road miles. That sounds about right. I have to go back and look at numbers again.
All right, thank you.
Well, and then maybe it doesn't require a second motion or an amendment to the current motion instead, just maybe if you could look into, you know, what a third option would look like, in a law, along with your future agenda or future plans, that'd be great.
All right, Councilmember Benavente, well, council's going to give, give them direction on this, who, who made the motion? Councilman Honduras, and second by Davis. All right, council, see no further discussions, look to you for your action, which is the direction to repeat that, Councilman Honduras?
Uh, move to approve the code of ordinance amendments and place them on the consent agenda for future adoption.
All right, all right, council, look to you for your votes. All right, Councilmember Benavente?
Green.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, you're, you're for, sir.
Well, I haven't left, so hopefully everybody still remembers me. It's late in the afternoon, I like to keep everybody awake a little bit, so. All right. All right, uh, so this is a resident, the presentation is on the resident request for no parking in neighborhoods. Just a quick background on this, uh, this came about whenever we were talking previously about bicycle lanes and multi-use lanes. Right now, the city does not have a formal defined process on how citizens can request a no parking zone. These zones have to be defined inside of a traffic schedule that is in our code of ordinances. And the last time that a no parking zone was created was on Brunswick Road back in 2023. Um, from this, we are asking that you guys provide us guidance on where you want us to go from here. So, well, I, I have a lot of recommendations and other proposals and hopefully from here you guys, um, are going to have.
All right, you have a question?
Oh, okay.
Um, tha- thank you, um, Mr. Mayor, so, I-
That, thank you, um, Mr. Mayor. So I, I will say I am interested in this. And the reason why I am is the neighborhood that I live in with over a thousand houses in it has one way in, one way out, and if you go to the back of the neighborhood, you are driving in probably anywhere for almost two miles to get to the end house. And it is not straight, it is hilly, it is curvy, you have to go around. We have these multi-use lanes, which I think are a double-edged sword, because I'm just waiting for somebody to hit somebody as they're going down them. But they use them, people in strollers use them, they have their kids in strollers, they have um, golf carts, they have runners, they have bicycles, everything goes through. But then you can have a car that parks in the middle of this lane. And then you have somebody, because we don't have sidewalks, and to the city's credit, we looked at putting sidewalks in the neighborhood. But as you said, people don't want to give up part of their yard. And it 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 was a thing, they they complained about not having sidewalks, but then when we talked about rectifying it, they didn't want to have it. So, no, been talking about this for twelve years. So what I can say is, I think that we need to do something that people can, if that neighborhood decides as an HOA to do that, they can. Because I will tell you, twelve years ago, I tried to have this happen and we couldn't make it happen. So I'm, I'm in favor of us, if the neighborhood, if we can do some type of ordinance, that we address that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I'm just the opposite. Uh, in my community, we don't have sidewalks. And we have families that have kids that still living with them and has five or six cars. Sometimes they have to park on the street, even though we don't have multi-use lanes, in case we did have them. I would prefer to them to park in the street instead of parking on their grass, because they have no other place to park. Then you have some that even wants to extend their driveways so they can put trailers by there and still don't have room for their cars. So I would prefer to them to be able to park in their driveway or on the street rather than being able to park on their grass, which some do until we tell them it's not within our restricted governance.
Mr. Mayor. So just for clarification now, uh, well, go ahead.
I was gonna ask Brian to, um, when we put this together, we tried to um, narrowly tailor it so that it did not include areas that no one wants changes. So this is an opportunity, so could you walk through exactly how this has been narrowly defined in every?
Yes, and uh, this is handful of slides, and then I have two examples to kind of show how staff are thinking right now. We did a municipal peer review. From that, we found that most everybody has a formal policy on the no parking process. Uh, all of them can be safety-driven, no parking process. This is meaning that there is a history, people parking in front of fire hydrants, or uh, people are parking in front of fire stations and blocking access, or they're parking too close to intersections, and i- it's becoming an issue with being able to traverse it because of emergency response. Six or or so have a resident-driven process. And of those resident-driven processes, one of them said that it can only go forward on a resident-driven process if an HOA brings it. Uh, other ones like Raleigh, it has to be eight contiguous blocks, it has to be eight blocks altogether, it can't just be a one-off block. And then unofficially, this was told to me over the phone, not written down anywhere, but they told me that they don't post sign. There was one municipality on the screen, they told me that they don't post signs unless it becomes a habitual issue. And so how much of a official request is that, I'm not certain. They have different thresholds for what the signatures are required for the no parking process. Some of them require a hundred percent, some of them require fifty percent plus one house. And then of that, there's also some municipalities that require to go through council to get council approval and others that don't. We found also that after you get above ninety-five thousand uh, population, they all have parking managers or parking coordinators that manage their downtown parking program. And they also most likely handle the no parking requests that you uh, are gonna see in these presentations as well. Uh, we are the only one that do not. So.
All right. All right, uh, Councilmember Mahondros, wrapping this up?
Yeah, I'm prepared to make a motion. I just want to comment, food for thought for everybody. This, in my opinion, is a cure that's worse than the ailment, and I'll tell you why. If you poll all the residents, or the majority of residents are favored, the majority overwhelmingly will tell you they don't want parking in front of their house. And it sounds good in theory, but it's gonna negatively impact a lot of things, including the value of your home, if you do this. Everyone, no one wants parking in front of their house from anyone except for them. They want to be able to park in front of their house. And if I throw a Super Bowl party or a Christmas party, or I want my guests to be able to park up and down the street. But I don't want anybody parking in front of my house. So everyone's gonna want this, but they're gonna be expecting to be able to park. So even if they want it and the petition's signed and the whole street wants it, when they go to sell their house, those buyers aren't necessarily gonna want that. People are generally expect that they can park in a residential neighborhood, up and down the street, on special occasions. And this, this is gonna be, we think we'll, I think that we think we'll be solving a problem with this, but you'll be creating a massive, massive problem. So I'm prepared to accept the report, but I think this is a, this is a problem if you start doing no parking zones in residential neighborhoods.
Can I just say one thing? Uh, thank you for that. This presentation is exclusively focused on the first point here, which is provide residents a formal process to request no parking for city streets with multi-use lanes. It's to address those areas that have multi-use lanes, so I just want to make sure that everybody's clear on that. It's not, you know, naturally across the city.
Right.
And to that point.
And we're the only ones with the multi-use lane.
Yes, and to that point, the streets have to be uh, certain width. And let's say, for instance, on Chilton, or let's say, for instance, on um, Hilliard, or some of the other places that have it, um, that have multi-use lanes on both sides of the street. And so um, that was, again, trying to narrowly tailor this to address the concerns that uh, the council members mentioned, so that it would not, it it, in many ways, it would fix some issues that were created when we went out and took up the bike lanes and converted those into multi-use lanes. Because there was, we had done the bike lanes inappropriately. And years, years and years and years and years ago, so this in some way fixes that, but more importantly, gives a pathway to based on the recommendations, if council accepts the recommendations, for the neighborhood to speak and for the city council or staff to consider it. Right now, there is not a path forward um, for that.
Question, question on the motion, if I may.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me get this clear. So we're only talking about if we have multi-use lanes. And according to this graph, if you have A, a HOA, that means you would have to get signatures or approval from the HOA from the residents, correct?
Brian?
So this here is just from Apex. So, okay, uh, I I have two slides of recommendations here, if I can just run through these very, very briefly. So the first one, it's only requested on multi-use lane city streets. It's applied on a block-by-block basis from intersection to intersection. It's mailed out to the signature approval area. Uh, that's based and matches with our no, uh, with our speed hunt process. After sixty days of collecting the signatures, it would put a six-month uh, block on making another request for that same block that would match our speed hunt process as well. The signature threshold will be seventy percent. Clarify on that, that is a neighborhood signature threshold for speed homes. So that's not, you live there and it has to have a hundred percent for directly in front of your house. If council wants it to be a hundred percent, it can be a hundred percent. Council wants it to be fifty percent plus one house, it can be, council's prerogative. But seventy percent matches the speed hunt threshold. The signatures are uh, required from both sides of the street, regardless of which side the no parking is applied to, whether that's one side or both sides of the street. And that seventy percent threshold, if it is seventy percent, is required on both sides of the street. It's not overall for the entire study area, it's seventy percent for side A, seventy percent for side B. Uh, abandoned houses, vacant lots, they're excluded from the needed signatures. Owners and tenants, they both can sign, but owners would override tenants, match the speed hunt process. And then for multifamily properties like apartment units, uh, every unit that is adjacent to the street that is subject to it would be required to sign as well.
I got that, Brian. I was just wondering about the HOA, because I seen it from Apex, but your recommendations doesn't say anything about the HOA. I got it, I'm clear. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I I learned my lesson from uh, the speed homes, uh, HOAs or.
All right, council got a motion and did we get a second? Second by Millie, all right, let's vote.
What was the motion? Can it be restarted, please?
Councilmember Benavente, she did text me and say you had your hand up.
Thank you, I I just didn't hear what the motion was, um, or who set, made it or who seconded it.
It was just to accept the report. Honduras, I made it, and Davis second.
Oh, I guess, but didn't the um, could, Mr. Uh, presenter, could you go back to the recommended um, actions? So, other than, I guess we can dispose of that motion first, but I, I guess I would make one to do what it says in the first sentence afterwards.
That's part of this.
Yeah.
That, that's part of the report that I'm motioning to accept.
Okay, so you're saying that you you're moving that we provide residents a formal process?
Yes, sir, all of these recommendations.
Okay, thank you.
All right, council, look to you for your votes. Councilmember Benavente. All right. All right, thank you, sir. City manager's update on administrative request?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pertim. Um, this was an admin report that was actually pulled, uh, that we had brought back. Uh, so we will, we'll make this pretty quick. Um, looking at these items, this is the cart tracker that we send out every few weeks. Uh, so this should be something new, um, but some of these are, uh, it is a live-in document, so this was pulled a few weeks ago, some things have changed. I'll hit some of those updates real quick, um, just to run through. At the end of the year, we're about an eighty percent close rate, uh, which is pretty good compared to previous years. So we've been working to try to uh, put dedication behind the work, um, that council has put forward for us. Uh, so we hit about right, right at the eighty percent rate of closure rate for FY twenty-five. The items that we have open, uh, the first two here, the downtown fire district updating to reconsider the historic district. Those from staff's viewpoint at this point is considered done on our end. However, with the policy committee, um, that would still be lingering in their district there or in their uh, wheelhouse. Um, and then council will be able to take that back up and make any type of motion or directive from that. Uh, looking at the policy for accepting real uh, property. Um, that item is still, uh, same ways, this staff's work is complete on it, um, and it's hold, on hold pending um, council's decision. Um, the item says it's tabled until the October meeting. So once that's done, then staff will move forward with whatever's recommended by council. The special event safety and bag policy, that item, the item, um, actually came back at the uh, scheduled for the September eighth work session or regular meeting. Also, that item will come back. Um, the crime stoppers actually came back a little bit ahead of time. Also, that was at our last regular meeting, um, in August, so that item is now considered closed. Uh, the carnival uh, permits is also considered closed. This item has been broken down into a few different segments. Uh, when you look at that, we have uh, the bag policy, crime stoppers, PD technology. This has been segmented out instead of just been a single item, looking at carnival permits is now been broken down into four or five different factors uh, that we're all tracking here. Two or three of the items have already been closed, um, the other one's still uh, sitting, which should we come back at the next meeting? Permitting performance, um, and review is considered uh, closed at this point. It was presented at June twenty-third uh, work session or regular meeting, second regular meeting of the month. And then that's all the items that we currently have open. The next few slides are talking about different um, items that we have closed in the FY twenty-five year. Key cities, speed limit reductions, the driving equity laws, um, it's just a few here. On the right-hand side, you can see those that, oh, we have a few of it, zero in one month, and then it goes all the way through, um, even those that rolled over from the FY twenty-four year. Any questions from council? Trying to make that as short and sweet as I possibly could.
Mission accomplished. Counselor, uh, seeing that? All right, motion by Councilmember Mahondros to receive, second by Davis, all right. Votes to receive the update. Thank you, sir. All right, six point oh eight, uh, councilmember request, these are periods where we use five minutes to uh, explain and see if there is a interest from council to uh, or consensus to move forward to more information on the particular item in question. Six point oh eight, uh, council, I brought uh, this item at the request of uh, citizens who had reached out to me. Councilmember Davis, as well as others on on council regarding um, the Parkview Manor inclusion in MSD. And so when that originally happened, uh, asked the attorney if she could find uh, any of the historical uh, data when the MSD was created, uh, the area where Parkview is on Robeson, I think may have been a hotel and um, uh, uh, transmit, trans uh, transmission shop, uh, Mr. Bee, uh, Mr. McLean's transmission shop, uh, Days Inn Hotel and and some commercial properties. Since then, it was demolished and and um, and the residential units were put there. And I'm not sure, and I, and and the reason I brought this to our attention was one, um, the residents made a valid case that there is an extra ten, eleven percent district paid by, you know, by all of us in this, in this footprint. But as a business, there are certain enhancements you get with it, uh, additional trash service and and some other things. In that particular situation, in the, within this subdivision, they have to pay fees for trash pickup and and other things that would normally be covered. So the reason I was bringing it tonight, to see if this was something, maybe could send a policy to compare what other uh, peer cities do in their uh, MSD districts in and around downtown. We're asking, um, the presentation earlier tonight ironically talked about that they want to encourage more residential. So I think this is an issue that we need to resolve on the front end, so that developers know what the rules are coming in and residents know what the rules are coming in. And so, uh, that's the ask tonight, is to see if this, um, if there's any discussion and to see if maybe policy could could get this staff dedicated time to bring back the peer city comparisons.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the chair of the policy committee, we will give it a, uh, take it under advisement and get back with you probably in our October meeting, because we already had the agenda set for the September meeting and bring it back to council.
All right, council, any comments, question? Okay, just uh, consensus to send that to policy for uh.
I have a question.
Okay, all right, Councilmember Benavente.
Mr. Manager, could you give us a idea of, you know, some potential drawbacks from reduce, creating a process to where people can leave the municipal service district?
Yes, sir, we will, um, uh, we can do that and we can do it, um, probably very effectively too by with the policy committee. Um, in Fayetteville, um, though very shortly, we have a mixed um, scenario downtown where we funded parking decks in the stadium using a variety of parking fees, revenues and and synthetic tips and stuff like that, so. But this would be a great um, question for us to delve with the policy committee. Having done a little bit of work, um, and as well, we all. Having done a little bit of work, and as well, we also need to confirm some other things with the MSD, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and others. I think we're to the point too where we have to look at our overall contract with the MSD for like Cool Spring and others as well. I think we're getting to, is it a four-year, three-years, we're in Kelly now for the renewal of that? I think we do it, try to do it every five years. And so it's just appropriate time. We can definitely fold that into our conversations with the policy committee. Pros and cons.
All right. Okay, council, look to you for your votes on consensus to send the policy for peer city comparisons. All right, Councilman Benevente? All right. All right, thank you, council. Moving to 6.09, council request, who's that?
Me.
Okay, Councilman Mahandros?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm be real brief. I printed out a map. I didn't get it in with the packet. But I spoke to a few of you guys, similar to Councilmember Davis and Councilmember Dr. Hare, I think last month, I think West Rarane and Seabrook on Ruhrington. Off the campground, Skybow intersection, campground eventually turns into, all right. I wonder, just the speed reduction, 35 to 25, and then additional speed humps. All right, so 50 seconds. I guess we could vote, I think y'all know what I want, unless y'all have questions.
All right, show of hands. I mean, sure, just, Councilman Benevente? All right, okay. Motion carries. All right, 6.010, Councilmember Davis.
I want to defer this to Councilmember Benevente first, because this is his request. I just went along with him with this one.
All right. Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Davis, and thanks for being interested in kind of co-sign this. This is potentially something that would happen in the Massey Hill area. So I thought it was only appropriate to make sure that the councilman for that area was at least interested. But this is ultimately a request to seek out some more information, to see what can be done. I sent everyone an email just two seconds ago that shows a series of pictures that I took at a National League of Cities Conference that we had in the past year and a half, maybe two years ago. And it was all about what can cities do to support, you know, young people. And I know that that's been an interest of this entire council. And the most effective thing that presenters from Harlem had shown, that was then replicated in South Salt Lake City, culminated in a reduction in juvenile crime by 70% over the course of five years. And what they also were able to determine was the cost of incarcerating young people versus the cost of investing in our young people were just, you know, miles apart. And you can see that in the slide, the dollar figures. Obviously, what it would cost in Fayetteville is going to be unique to us. And so that's the kind of, you know, research I think we would like to seek out through this council member request. But just to get to the punchline here, they hyper-focused on their local alternative meal schools. They looked at data showing that that's usually the last place we really have a hold of our young people before, you know, they start to age to their later teens, and they're still sort of in that sixth to eighth grade range, and therefore they become less and less interested in being around people, you know, that, you know, they're well older than the typical age range for that, and that's when they drop out. And that's when we see them showing back up, sort of, you know, as young adults, you know, living antisocial lifestyles. But if they rewind the clock back and they see that this was the last place that we could have done more to mentor them, intervene, coach council, and help them kind of stay on the right track, that, we're not saying that this is the only group of young people that we want to impact. Of course, if we can do something for younger ones, we should. For the ones that are already in high school and beyond, we should. But as far as bang for your buck, biggest return on investment, it's that age range, and it's those young people that have already sort of triggered sort of the first red flag. They've already gotten put out of school because of behavioral issues. They're now at the alternative school. These are the ones that are most at risk, and there is the greatest potential for improvement overall. And so we are not cumberling county schools, but we do have Massey Hill Rec Center right next door to Howard Learning Academy. And so if we can do our part to assist those young people, especially because the data shows it's after school, not late at night, that that age range is really seeing the most potential trouble, or becoming victims of crimes as well. And so if we can create something to support them and their families right after school, in any other city that that's been tried, they've seen huge returns on that investment. So this is, again, just kind of fact-finding. I think that if it works here, it can be scaled upwards. But I'm asking for a very hyper-focused interest in that area, for those young people in particular. We're glad to answer any questions at this point. Hopefully I still have some time.
No, we don't. So I think, so I had a meeting with OCS Director, Mr. Jones, this morning, and he, we discussed, and he's always going to bring something similar to this back to council eventually. So I know the request was to send it to OCS, but I did have a meeting with him this morning, so he's already working on something similar, or he will get back with us with this. So we thank you, Councilmember Benevente, for this in Massey Hill, and I hope our council will see the need for this in the Massey Hill district. Thank you.
All right, council, look to you for consensus to, what is this, to send this?
To staff to look into it, whether it's OCS or any other department.
I guess, yeah, he's working on something, according to what Malik said, so I guess he'll come back with all that. All right.
Question on the motion, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I understand the idea, but if we want to solve our juvenile problems, we have to get everybody involved. And what it says right here is that we're going to have a municipality priority. But we need to have, be a county priority. We need to make sure it's a school priority. We need to get the school board and county commissioners and everybody along with our OCS involved. We just can't keep tackling things by ourselves without, we have to move forward together as one, as one unit.
To answer that question, sir, I will let you know that, well, I'll just let you know that it's the municipal folks that initiated, but by no means am I saying exit out partners. That's why we're asking for information, and maybe we'll actually say, get involved with these other partners.
Councilman Benevente, time's up. Five minutes. All right, council, look to you for your, for your votes on that. And I'll say this, that motion carries as we're waiting, was that the last one? I think, I think we do have a quick update by the attorney.
I move that we enter into closed session to discuss city versus PCH.
All right, is there a sec? All right. Show of hands, to go into closed session? Yeah, very quick. It's just an update. But council, I wanted to say, as we were talking about the cost, like we spent 860-plus thousand on programs, and I'm for another 860 if it works. But there's going to be a cost to these things. So is it worth, is it worth saving lives, whether it's this, sound thinking, or whatever? See, there was no, there was no financial comparison to this. It was, do we need to do it? We got to just keep that in mind.
As long as you also invest in that stuff, then you can say yes to it all.
Absolutely. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, okay.
[Crosstalk]